Thank you, other one. Thank you for your patience and honor to the meeting. Today is April 10th. Currently, and following the meeting's order, we have first look at the approval of the minutes.
Joan, I can barely hear you. This is George.
All right. Thank you, George, for the feedback. All right. How about that? Is that a little bit better?
It's a little better, but not, it's not great.
All right. Okay. Dan. The comedy of errors here.
We've never had this problem in this room before, so it's kind of frustrating because we've done this a number of times.
I'm gonna point to this. I'm gonna leave the new.
Madam Chair, while we're waiting, can I call the roll?
Yeah, why don't you do that?
Can everyone hear me okay? This is, I guess a thumbs up is probably best for anyone on video. John Michael O'Brien?
He's absent.
He's excused.
Excused.
George Millard?
Present.
Diane Jorsey? Excuse. Timothy Zigma?
I know, I saw him. Oh, we can't hear you, Tim.
He's gone. But he's with. Oh, we got you. Thank you. Brian Rogan?
Brian, I know, was home testing his new computers. Brian, are you with us?
Yes.
I thought I heard some.
I see your name, but I don't hear you. Are you muted? Barely. So you may have to play with your, your volume. Joan Beale?
Here.
Steve Wolman?
Here.
Thank you. Peter Zarabozo? Peter Zarabozo, I see your name as well. However, I do not hear you or see you. Peter, you're, I'm getting a a low bandwidth from, from your video. We resume in a moment, it says. So please let us know when you're on the meeting, if you can hear me. Andrew Legnani?
Here.
Thank you. And Steve Biella Jr.? We know the name. Thank you. Okay, so we have, we know two of the three alternates are present. One alternate is shown as being online, but we need to hear, and then we have two regular members that are excused.
I would ask then, for the purpose of this meeting, Stephen Biella. I'm installing through the notes, and I believe that you would be, that you have been attending all the meetings, and I think I'm gonna ask you to be seated for John Michael O'Brien this evening. And I'm going to ask Andrew Legnani to be seated for Diane Jorsey this evening. You guys cool with that?
I think Peter just came back, by the way.
I'm here if you can hear me.
Yeah, all right. Now we can and noted as present. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so let's move on to the approval of the minutes for March 18th, 2021. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Do we have any corrections at this time? Or is there a notion to approve?
Motion to approve Timothy Zigma.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zigma. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Rogan, I'll second that.
All right. Thank you, Brian. And further discussion on the minutes, then all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Okay, moving on. Scheduling a public hearing. First item is a proposed amendment of Timothy Sullivan Esquire to amend Section 6C2, which is the special design district special permit uses. The suggested date for this is the 20th of May, 2021. Do we have a motion to schedule that for public hearing?
And Zigma put on post, uh, public hearing, May 20th, 2021.
All right, Mr. Zigma has the motion to schedule for public hearing. Do we have a second?
I'll second Steve Biella Jr.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Biella. Further discussion on that item, then all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any commissioners opposed? Moving on. Special permit site plan application for Task Report Connecticut for a 32,490 foot square foot one-story building to be used as a truck repair facility at 250 Webster Square Road and 73 Woodlawn Road. Suggested date here is also on the 20th of May, 2021. Do I hear a motion?
So move to Timothy Zigma.
All right, Mr. Zigma, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second, Commissioner Rogan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rogan, for the discussion on that. All, oops, oh, all those in, do we want to do the vote? I'm sorry, Maureen just?
Yeah, it's after. I want to talk after.
All right, okay. Then all those in favor of scheduling for the public hearing on the 20, 20th of May, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any commissioners opposed? Hearing none, moving on. Maureen, I know you kind of tagged me on that one. I would say you gave me a waving finger, but that sounds, that sounds true, so.
So we also had a pending application that was not noted as requiring a public hearing and then was discovered to require a public hearing and special permit, and I would like to add that, I would ask that you amend the agenda to add another item, Priority LLC for scheduling for a special permit for a public hearing.
And do we need a motion to add that?
Make a motion to add that item to schedule public hearing, see?
Okay, the motion to add it onto the agenda is made by Mr. Zigma. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Rogan, I'll second.
All right, thank you. And that is going to be, and, and the, I'm sorry, that was for Priority LLC. Okay, terrific. And that's also gonna go to public, public hearing, May 20th, 2021. So now you should vote to put it on for May 20th, 2021. All right, so added it. So now, do we have a motion to schedule it, now that we add it to the, to the, to the agenda? Can we have a motion to move it to public hearing?
Motion to move it to public hearing, made.
All right, we got a split one. I'll give this one to Mr. Wolman for the scheduling to the public hearing, and do we have a second? Nobody wants to, nobody wants to, Tim, are you seconding?
Yeah, I second.
Okay, we're having problems hearing, folks, so sorry. All right, so, Mr. Wolman and then Mr. Zigma has a second for the discussion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any commissioners opposed? Hearing none, moving on. It's a new business. We have the Braun Lyons Agricultural Fair Incorporated list of events 2021. We have Joseph Dornfried, I believe, is Joseph Dornfried with us today?
Yes, I am, Commissioner.
Oh, okay, terrific. All right. So, all right, what do we have here? It's a, a list of events for the, for this year?
Yeah, that is correct, and the, most of the events are the same as have been in prior years in our we did point out a few new events, most of which are small, and we did receive comments from various town departments. I think you can go through those if you want, or we can discuss them individually.
Okay. What's the feel for the commission? Does the commission, have you had a chance to look at it, and is there anything that, any issues that jump out? Madam Chair? Commissioner Wolman?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, why don't we just prove it, subject to making sure that staff takes care of the safety and health of anything that's added in?
My dear, does that sound like a, a motion, Mr. Wolman?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve and let staff deal with any details that we have here. And do we have any, do we have a second for our motion?
Commissioner Rogan?
Oh, 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 I don't know who got the second.
Timothy Zigma, second for discussion.
All right, so Mr. Zigma wants to have the second for discussion. Okay, go, Mr. Zigma.
Yes, I just want to make sure the operation that's in that north parking lot, the railroad ties for, I guess it's Eversource, be completed before any events in that fairground. That is not a commercial operation like that is not really allowed there, so want to make sure that's finished.
Okay. Yes, Maureen.
So we, the town hall has had to look into the activities at the North End, and I guess I put it in my staff report with regard to the activities that were happening there. They are under force, Eversource, they are under the purview of PIRA and enforcement to remove that specifically, the Eversource activities. Does not fall within zoning's purview. While that said, if I remember my staff report correctly, staff, town hall, various officials have had discussions with both Eversource and some entities at the Lyons. Eversource should have already wrapped up that activity there, and future activity is scheduled to be elsewhere. They don't need it anymore. That's where it was supposed to be wrapped up. They also do have an easement area that we have, that can't beyond that be controlled by the town. We, we are monitoring, and any activity that does fall within our purview, we are prepared to handle.
Do we have any other questions or concerns from our commissioners? Okay, here we go. All righty, all right, so then, let's, we have a motion, we have a second, so I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? All right, so hearing none, we're moving on, and congratulations to Lyons Club, and I see that the Berlin Fairings also looks like it's going to be happening again this year, so it makes me very happy. All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good night, Mr. Dornfried. Onto the public hearings. First application is a special permit use application of William Watson III for an accessory dwelling at 168 Blue Ridge Road.
Martin has it.
Yeah, Brian, do you have the call for the public hearings?
No, that he does.
Brian, are you still with us?
Yes, I am with you. I can read it off my agenda, but I don't have the call itself.
All right, let me see if I can pull it up. Hold on one second, and then maybe we'll read it from town hall.
Is it a full moon today? Does anyone know?
It feels like it.
While, while the public hearing call is being pulled up, this is Adam, the ZDIL, by the way. I, I noticed earlier that William Watson did call in earlier. It looks like there might be some issues with the muting, but William, if you can hear me, and if you can't talk, try calling back in while they're pulling up the documents.
So here's the public hearing notice. Am I sharing it? I'm probably not.
No, it's not coming up.
Sorry, hold on one second.
Stop sharing. Okay, go for it, Maureen.
Yeah, now, Brian, can you read it, or do you need someone at town hall to read it, or someone else?
Oh, that's tiny. Yeah, I don't think I can read that. It's a little bit.
Why don't we just go for it from here? I'm not sure we'll do the same job we do because I'm not sure exactly how you read it, but let's try. Town of, this Maureen speaking, Town of Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission, notice public hearings. The Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings on Thursday, April 15th, 8:00 PM by remote WebEx conference. The public will have to be able to access and participate in the meeting via WebEx video conference and conference call or via telephone conference call, as provided below. Meeting link with all the information is provided in the public hearing.
Hello?
Public hearing notices. The following public hearings will be held at which time the opportunity will be given for those who wish to be put A, proposed amendments to the Berlin zoning regulations of Timothy Sullivan Esquire for new section 11BD, planned residential infield development. B, special permit use application of William J. Watson III for an accessory dwelling unit at 168 Blue Ridge Road. C, proposed amendment to the Berlin zoning regulations of Timothy Sullivan Esquire, I'm sorry, for new section 6G3EE, gasoline filling stations opened on 3/18/21 and continued to, to this meeting on 4/15/21. D, zone change request of BT 2008 LLC to change the zone at 404 Berlin Turnpike, map block lot 10-38312 7333, and lot 12-7334, and lot 13A, and lot 13C-7509, and lot 13C-7510 from Berlin Turnpike One Zone to Berlin Turnpike Development Zone. 131, BTD. That's a correction that should be. Special permits, and E, special permit site plan applications of 2008 DT 2008 LLC for a mixed use development at 404 Berlin Turnpike, map block lot dash 10 dash 2 dash 83 dash 12 dash 7333, and 12 dash 7334, and 13A, and 13C-7509, and 13C-7510, open January 21, 2021. Continued and her February 25th, 2021, 3/18/21, and continued before 15/21. Dated the 41st May, day of March, 2021, at Berlin, Connecticut. Brian Rogan, Secretary, Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission filed at Town clerk's office, March 31, 2021.
Okay, so.
Hello?
So, yeah?
This is William Watson. I, I called in before, but I didn't, I don't think you guys heard me.
No, we did not, and thank you for attempting to join us today as we are, we're just about on to your
Oh, that's, my apologies, yeah. I heard you guys all before from seven o'clock on, but for some reason, my phone just wasn't connecting.
That's okay.
Thank you.
What do we, what information can you share with us about?
My, I, I can give you a brief history. My, my father died unexpectedly back in November. My mother has some physical limitations, but she's mobile and those types of things. She's 72 years old. We live on Blue Ridge Road. We live on the end of a cul-de-sac. Our house is owned R21. What I'd like to be able to do is we have an existing master bedroom suite that was put on by the prior owners at the very least 10 years ago, if not longer, prior to my purchasing the home. So it's been established for, you know, over five years. The, the existing structure would be about 708 square feet. We've, the plans I submitted were an initial drawing, just so I could have the plans done and submitted. The idea is that we would have 700 square feet applied to this particular spot with, with a maximum use of 700 square feet, with a kitchen, open floor plan, bedroom, and a master bathroom that would be connected. It would have its own access point on the right-hand side of the house, so it would not be sharing any entrance ways with the front of our home. Based on the regulations that are reviewed, it looks like we would be compliant. All the information, all the, we would have it fire-coated, proper permits pulled. We've already lined up an architect who is resum, going to be resubmitting new plans, just outlining everything that we're going to be doing within that 700 square feet, and we already have contractors potentially lined up to begin the, the construction of it if the permit were granted. Our intention would be to build an addition, which we would apply for, building permit for, to put a new master bedroom suite over our existing two-car garage in the front of the house with an access solely from our second floor and existing in the colonial. And then get, once that was finished, move out of our existing master bedroom suite, and then begin the deconstruction here and build out accordingly to the, to the rules that the Berlin has set forth.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions? I, I do have just a couple of questions here. You said that the addition itself, Mr. Watson, it's going to consist of a kitchen, a separate bedroom and bathroom area?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and that's the 700, is this gonna have a separate entrance to the house?
Yes, it will. The idea is, of course, she would be able to utilize our home as it exists now with her own door, with a doorway, but no, she would have her own official separate entrance on the right-hand side of the house that would be, would not face the front of the property. It wouldn't share the same frontage as the, the front door, the way it's been designed, and the plans that were submitted would show the entranceway on the right-hand side of the existing structure right now. And, oh, I, I forgot. I, I forgot to add, and I'm sorry if I didn't do it before, when, when we bought the house, the house had already been put on public sewer and water, though originally there was a septic system that was in this house. My best guess is, in talking to Kensington Fire District, and I provided the information regarding that to Planning and Zoning, is that when the original owner, someone named Mr. Demongio, had the house and put the additions on, he then connected to public sewer and water. As a matter of fact, his, he built over like a portion of the septic, and it was allowed to do so. So we are on public sewer and water. We are up to date, obviously, with Kensington Fire District, and we've been paying that accordingly for, for the 10 years that we've lived here.
Okay, well, then the purpose of the addition B, as I said, as you said, it was gonna be for your mom, and I think that's, that's a great gesture. Would she have access to the common areas of the house with the family?
Yeah, the idea would be is that we would essentially, I wish I could explain it to you. We have a living room, and off the living room is where the master bedroom has been built right now. It's on the ground floor. It's on the right-hand side of the home. So there's a, there's a doorway now that exists to get from our living room, obviously, into our master bedroom. They may adjust that door to the left and to the right, so she would have, you know, to take advantage of the space. But that would be the idea. She would have access to our, the common area of our home as well. You know, we have dogs and children and, and all those types of things, so yeah, we wouldn't want her to feel like she was a stranger in the home that she was, that she was living in. Unfortunately, the house that my family owns in New Britain, they've had it for 70 years in the family. And so it's a beautiful Tudor, and unfortunately, my mom's just not able to, to manage it. She's using a chairlift to get up the stairs and all those types of things, and so safety is a, a real significant concern, so my brother, sister, and I would like to do this. She asked if she could move in with my wife and I and our four children. And when she presented us with that, we, we felt if we could qualify, we, we would make the application.
All right, and then just one additional question for you, because you're not gonna move your master bedroom up on top of the garage area. And so obviously, it's gonna be, it's gonna be accessible from your second floor.
That, that's exactly right. There are no, with, with respect to that, there will be no separate entrances as it's designed to, to come in from the outside of the house. You'd have to go up to our existing second floor. As a matter of fact, the, the architect's been out a couple of times to retake the measurements to make sure we could do a connecting hallway directly from our second floor over to the, over our family room to our, to the new master bedroom suite.
Okay, all right. Well, that concludes my questions, and so I'll go back to the commissioners. Do you have any issues? Or, okay, hearing none, how about to staff? Do we have any additional questions or input?
I just wanted to put a, a number of items on the record. This is Maureen speaking. Pointing out specifically that if approved, the special permit will need to be filed on the land records and certification made that you have continued compliance with the requirements, that the unit continues to be occupied in compliance with the regulations. Just a reminder that I like to put on the record for all applicants. Reiterating that staff comment number three is no longer a concern. There was a letter supplied and provided for in your packet from the Kensington Fire District dated April 9th, confirming that the, been on public sewer since at least 2008. And then noting that the plan that was submitted indicates that the unit is 708 square feet, when the maximum apartment size is allowed to be less than 700 square feet, which mathematically, looking at the footprint of 728 square feet, combined with removal of the fireplace and closets within that footprint and the living area itself, math and as presented by the applicant, it appears as though it would, would easily meet being less than 700 square feet, but the plans provided for the record, as well as for any permitting should reflect that reduction down to below the, the unit size. But I don't, I, I think that needs to be confirmed by his contractors. And that was it for my comments. Thank you.
The one last comment that I have, and I just say this, just to put it on record, is that this is, the purpose of this dwelling is for a parent. It's for a direct relative of his family, and, and the aspect of sharing your home with your mom and being able to provide certain level of care and oversight, which, which I think is, is, is a very good thing. It's actually, in today's world, it's, it's really a very kind thing. But looking forward, as time goes on, or if this house is ever sold, I would just want to make sure that this does not turn into a rental property. Um, but looking forward as time goes on, or if this house is ever sold, I would just want to make sure that this does not turn into a rental property.
No, I mean, our, our intentions are, obviously, we, we, you know, we live here. We intend to occupy here for the foreseeable future, you know, and the idea is that if something were to happen to my mother, and we didn't have like a child coming back from college and living here for a little while, which is completely possible, we would, we would, you know, we, we either sell the house as it existed with the ordinance, with it, with the amendment, uh, and have the new people understand what they're, what they're doing, number one. And number two, if we had to stay in and we, we, and if we couldn't comply, we would just basically re, you know, redo the space, to turn it into, you know, just an, an open space plan for a den or something along those lines. Uh, but it's hard, it's hard to look into the future, but we've anticipated that it might be an issue. But, uh, no, uh, family only, and that's exactly what our intentions are here.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure that I get that on the record so that.
Oh, no, absolutely. I, I absolutely understood it when I applied for it, exactly what's written in your regulations, and, uh, we'd have no intentions to have it be a rental space.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I think Maureen had one more.
I was just going to clarify that the regulations, um, section eleven T, um, is very specific with regard to the parameters by which the, um, accessory dwelling unit can be occupied and is, appears to be the reason for the yearly certification. Um, I, for everyone's just knowledge, um, want to point out that it is not required to necessarily be a relative. However, it has to meet the parameters listed in, in that section regardless.
All right, terrific. Um, commissioners, any other feedback that we want to share at this time? We are in a public hearing. And is there anyone from the public who wishes to now address the commission regarding this application? Hearing none. Coming back to the, uh, to the commissioners. And is there a notion to make a motion on this public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing on this item.
All right, thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mr. Zigma. Do I have a second to close?
Commissioner Rogan.
Second, Commissioner Warman.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Rogan has it. Um, uh, further discussion? And all those in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye?
Aye.
All right. Is there, is there any commissioners opposed? All right, so, great, thank you. On to the next public hearing, which is the.
Thank you. Am I allowed to, uh, to hang? Should I hang up at this point?
Um, let me see. Yeah, we're probably going to swing, we're gonna, we're gonna come back to you under old business for further discussion and possibly approval. Um, so.
Okay.
Go ahead, Maureen.
I would just note that at that time, that's for the commission to deliberate and make a vote. Um, they wouldn't be able to ask you any further questions or anything else. So depending on whether you wanted to check back in or stay on the public hearing, or just call the office tomorrow to find out the outcome, um, any of those choices would be yours, whether or not to.
I, I appreciate that. I think I'll call tomorrow because I can tell you that my, my home phone is blinking, and it's about to run out of battery. So it seems to be work, it seems to be exactly what I need to do. So thank you, uh, ladies and gentlemen. I, I greatly appreciate it. Have a nice night. All right, bye-bye.
Okay, going on to the public hearing for the Zoukian request of the BT two thousand and eight LLC, which means deserved to be taken over for a Berlin Turnpike. Um, do I need to read all the questions?
I don't think the way you should know that they're combined.
Yes. Do we, we already combined these all together?
So, um, for the previous public hearings, items B and C have been combined so that the record and questions and conversation can be, um, incorporated for both.
And this is also continued from, uh, basically, uh, from the last meeting, which was, uh, three eighteen, R thirteen, twenty-two, one. Okay. We're still in public hearing on this, and I know that we just received another packet, um, Maureen. We've, we've got, we've received some more information regarding this application. Before we go into this, and I know that, you know, a lot of people, um, probably, well, I'll speak for myself. I'm feeling a little bit overwhelmed with all this information because it keeps, it keeps coming. And I, I'm trying to get through all the paperwork, and I'm trying to do diligence and to be fair about the project. But I'm a little overwhelmed, and I will admit, I have not yet looked at this latest addition to my reading staff here. Um, so, uh, I, I will be honest with you. I do not, even though we're in the public hearing, I'm not prepared to discuss this right now, only because, um, I haven't had a chance to really finish going over all the information that's been passed over to me. Now, um, I don't know if there's any other commissioners that feel differently about that. But it's a little overwhelming. Um, it's, it's a little discerning when we keep getting all this information, and it just seems to be so close to the, to the, to the, uh, the meeting deadline, the meeting itself, that I, I just haven't been able to have a chance to do diligence. But I will listen to the other commissioners and see if, how you feel about this. Is there anyone else, or, or am I the only one who's overwhelmed? I don't know if I'm hearing everybody.
Uh, the information that I reviewed, uh, since, uh, that we have here, uh, there hasn't been any major changes here. Uh, I know, uh, Commissioner Bailey, uh, you asked for, uh, information on the clubhouse and the layout of that, uh, which came on the computer, uh, uh, yesterday, but, uh, uh, that layout has been supplied, and I think they're just supplying anything that we asked for.
Exactly. This is the same information that we've had for months. We're just trying to answer your questions. Same information.
Joan, this is Commissioner Millard. I, I guess just looking at the information they provided, again, it, it's, it's just packaged in a more, um, easily adjustable manner. I think if you let them walk through it, I don't think you're going to get a whole lot of it by sitting down, reading through it by yourself. I think if they present it to us, it's, it will make it clear, um, what you, the answer that you asked them for from the, at the last meeting. I mean, we can continue this indefinitely if we keep going the way we're going on this. It's all been there. I think they've done an admirable job. They've responded to everything we said. All engineering they've responded to. I think they've done a great job, and I think pretty soon we all have an answer.
Madam Chairman, uh, this is Peter Alter on behalf of the applicant. Uh, I, I think that, uh, that latest comment by the commissioner is, is pretty accurate. If you let us, um, walk you through the materials, uh, what you're going to see is that we've taken materials that have been submitted from the, really from the very first application submission and highlighted the details that.
Uh-oh.
This is Maureen speaking. Peter, you, you froze, Peter.
I was asked our professionals to provide you with more, uh, detailed and structured information. This is a very intense, complicated project that, uh, has a lot of different aspects to it.
Attorney Alter, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
We, we lost part of your statement. Um, the phone just, the, the presentation just stopped for us. We saw you, but we couldn't hear what you were saying. So I'm.
How is it now?
Better, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I apologize. Um, what I was saying is that I think that if we walk you through the details that we've provided in response to the issues that you raised at the last public hearing session, what you'll see is that the materials are not different, but we've added or enhanced particular details so that you can see them more clearly. Uh, the intensity of the overall project makes it difficult for us to know what the commission will consider to be important. And so, uh, your guidance at the last public hearing is what has driven the materials that we have tonight. Uh, we have all of our people here ready to, uh, discuss those. And I think when we finish, um, it will be a, a situation where you, I hope, recognize that we've responded to every issue that, uh, you've raised. And so what I'd like to do is, is walk you through, um, that presentation. We have our, our engineer, our landscape architect, our architect, our traffic expert, uh, who's risen from his hospital bed to attend tonight, uh, as well as myself and Mr. Diadio, uh, to add information as, as we go. But if you would allow us to do that, I think that, uh, I think that you're going to be satisfied that we've responded to every issue that you've raised. Um, and with that, Madam Chairman, I'd, I'd ask your permission to go ahead and proceed.
Okay, well.
Thank you.
All right. Well, it seems that the rest of the commission is interested in your presentation, so let's go ahead with that, and I'll just try to catch up.
Thank you. Appreciate your willingness to do that.
No problem.
The first, uh, matter that I, that I did want to raise is the, the point that Maureen made right at the beginning, which is that you're really conducting two pub, public hearings at the same time. The first one being with respect to a zone change application, and the second one being a special permanent site plan approval. The issue that is outstanding on the zone change is the matter of the commission's interpretation of the ten-acre language within your regulation. Uh, we would suggest and support the interpretation that your expert, Dr. Poland, suggested, um, as really the most sensible and, and appropriate manner to handle the interpretation, which is ultimately that once a person has achieved a ten-acre site to submit it to this particular zone, parcels can be created up in, consisting of two acres or more, uh, with respect to the underlying zone. Uh, that makes the most sense to us. As I've represented to you in the past, we can comply with either interpretation, but this is an opportunity to give guidance to your staff because, uh, it really looks to the commission for this kind of interpretation. And as Dr. Poland indicated, you have the authority to go ahead and make that interpretation. Um, I also wanted to just remind everyone that at our last public hearing session, uh, your engineering consultant indicated that it was satisfied, he was satisfied with all of Mr. Bruton's changes, and that the only things that remained were really housekeeping or highly technical findings, and that there were no substantive issues remaining from an engineering site design standpoint. It's been a challenge for us to present a package to you that was sensible and easy to follow because of the various aspects of this project. But at the last public hearing, you asked us for more detail regarding our Main Street plan, our amenity building, site lighting, site landscaping, and a response to the question of, of alternative planning if the hotel element of the plan does not come to pass. And that's what we've submitted to you for consideration tonight. There's nothing new, but what we've done is provided you with greater detail specifically directed at the items you raised at, at the last public hearing. So with that, uh, what we're going to do is, is walk through those various aspects. Matt Bruton, our project engineer, is going to just review some of the site planning matters. Wayne Violet, who's our professional landscape architect, who's been with the project from the very beginning, will provide greater information to you regarding his landscape design. Uh, Mark Joyce, our new architect, will take you through the Main Street environment and the clubhouse design and function. Um, as, as, in order to help you better appreciate the role that, uh, or the community aspect of the plan that Mr. Diadio has developed. Matt Bruton will then come back and describe alternative development plans in the event that the hotel element does not come to pass. And then Scott Hesketh will review his report. We asked him to prepare a further analysis, given the possibility of a change of use from the hotel use. Once we've completed that, I think you'll, I hope you'll appreciate that we really have responded to all the issues that you raised. Uh, Maureen, is it possible for you to allow, uh, Matt to share the screen so that he can, uh, work his way through the PowerPoint?
Um, yeah, actually, I believe that, um, Adam will probably handle that. Um, there we go.
Thank you. There we go. Great.
While we have a. Whoops.
We'll still hear from, from Matt Bruton.
While we have a pause here, uh, before we go into the presentation, just so I can keep our record straight here for planning and zoning. Um, originally, Mr. Legnaney was going to be seated for the whole meeting. However, because he was, he was excused from the last meeting, I'm going to ask that, uh, alternate Peter Zarabozo be seated on this item because his attendance has been consistent all the way through, and we want to be fair to the applicant. So we're going to make that adjustment for this item. Thank you. So now we can continue uninterrupted with, uh, further with your presentation. Please proceed. Um, all right, we can't hear anything here. I don't know about anyone else.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Much better.
Are we good, guys?
Double mute. Okay. Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, for the record, my name is Matthew Bruton. I'm an engineer with BL Company, headquartered in Meriden, Connecticut. Uh, I'll walk you through the site plan changes based on the feedback from the last hearing. Uh, what you see, again, uh, just a familiar sight, rise yourself, is the overall site plan. Um, just for context, the Berlin Turnpike is on the right side of the page. Uh, what I'm going to do tonight is focus on the residential, um, development in the rear, uh, which I'm circling kind of roughly with my, uh, cursor here now. Uh, as Peter alluded to, the parting comment from the last hearing was, um, related to creating a sense of community, uh, which we obviously felt goes along with the previous comments from the peer reviewers related to the desired, you know, connectivity throughout the development, um, regarding crosswalks and sidewalks, um, for the residents. So, um, just before I move to the next slide, just want to reiterate that this is still a compliant plan with your regulations, and we are still not requesting any, uh, variances, um, for any of your bulk standards. Move to the next page here. Um, so this is the focus in on that residential area. So just for context, uh, the hotel and the retail strip would be to the right-hand side of the page, and the gas service station would be kind of to the, the lower right. Um, the goal here was to create more of a streetscape neighborhood feel, uh, once you enter past the gates. And just to point those out, uh, we do have some entrances, um, to the top where my mouse is hovering, in the middle here, and further down. This would be gated off, as we've mentioned before, from the residential, uh, or the residential to the retail commercial portion of the development. Um, to, to create this kind of streetscape neighborhood feel, uh, we went back and actually revised, um, the layout of this main drag between the five residential buildings. And to, to create this feel, we've, um, lined up the landscaped islands, uh, you know, to the best of our ability here, to, um, to be more staggered, uh, to be less staggered and more, more in line. Um, and by doing that, um, it gives us more options, I'm going to zoom in here a little bit, uh, to create additional crosswalks, um, for the residents to, to cross the streets, um, as they desire between buildings and to get access to the clubhouse. Um, as I walk you from the, uh, you know, left or the right-hand side of the page to the left, we've also added a different amenities along this streetscape area, um, for the residents to use. Uh, we've added, um, benches and bike racks, and I'll just circle a few locations around the main entrances of several of the buildings, um, as you kind of walk through here, um, even in front of the clubhouse, um, in several locations. So this will provide, um, streetscape amenities for residents as they leave their buildings or as they're coming back, um, from other residences of the clubhouse back to their, uh, their, their home. Um, um, in addition to, um, that, we've also provided, you know, decorative light fixtures, um, a- along the streetscape, uh, to provide that neighborhood feel, uh, and to make it less, uh, feel less like a kind of commercial parking lot, uh, which is not the desire of, uh, the developer for this, uh, this community. Um, what you'll see later in, in the presentation, um, but I'll talk about briefly here is the focal point of this neighborhood will be the clubhouse, uh, which is obviously centered between the five buildings. Uh, and the connectivity that we have created, um, for all the residents, uh, to get to this area will be a hub for everyone to hang out. Um, later on in the presentation, uh, you will hear from the architect about the amenities in that clubhouse, which will make it an integral part of this neighborhood. Um, before we move to the architect though, I, I do want to, uh, pass this over to, uh, Wayne Violet, our landscape architect to discuss more of the landscaping. Um, you do see on this colored plan, we do show, um, green trees, um, that are, are the more significant caliber along the streetscape and those newly created islands. Um, and I will jump over to some more black and white plans for, uh, Wayne to discuss in more detail. So, um, at this point, Wayne, I'll, I'll jump over to these landscape plans and you just let me know, uh, which ones you want me to focus it on.
Great. Thank you, Matt. This is Wayne Violet, Senior Landscape Architect with BL Companies. Uh, first off, if anyone's having any difficulties hearing me, or would you like, if you'd like me to repeat anything, uh, please let me know. I'd be happy to do so. Uh, Matt, this, this plan that you have on the screen is perfectly fine to talk to. So, uh, I wanted to give everyone, uh, kind of a quick, uh, design intent, design goal for the landscape plan that has been prepared and submitted. Anytime we're approaching a project, we're looking at site context, what's around the site, what we're doing with the particular use on the site and really try to apply landscaping that's going to meet the needs of the use. It's going to be compliant, uh, with the local zoning code, uh, and just fit well with the area. So, uh, some of our design intents, our design goals is for sure. We absolutely have a zoning compliant plan. Uh, the, where we comply is, uh, specifically in the non-residential area. Uh, there's a requirement for 15% landscape area. Uh, we're at that or above, uh, so certainly compliant there. As far as landscape strips, side, front, uh, for this particular development, uh, we meet and comply with that particular uh, zoning code, uh, within the parking areas. And what you're seeing on the screen, this is a black and white, uh, a picture of the residential area, but generally throughout all the parking areas, we meet or exceed the 15% required landscape area. So just going through the, you know, the compliance of this particular landscape plan, we've checked that box. Uh, but this plan, as far as a landscape standpoint, needs to do a lot more than that and just the lo- the local zoning code. Uh, one of the things that we focused on, um, and Matt, if you wouldn't mind, maybe we'll go over to sheet, uh, LL2, which is the kind of the north end along the Berlin Turnpike. Uh, it's very important that this project, uh, you know, continues the, um, you know, the enhanced corridor upon the Berlin Turnpike to create an attractive front door for this particular property. We've done that with the landscaping. We have, uh, not only shade and canopy trees along on the front edge, uh, also ornamental trees that will give you a great, uh, seasonal or flowering effect. Uh, well, uh, well and wide, uh, maintained lawn areas along that front, uh, to really give you an attractive, uh, front yard. And first thing that a lot of folks are going to experience and see uh, as they enter this particular site. So that was a very important goal that we tried to accomplish with this project. Matt previously had shown the, um, the view of the residential area, the rendered view that showed a lot of the landscaping colored. And again, for a great landscape community, it's very important that you add diversity with the plant material, that not only are you adding, uh, shade, evergreen and ornamental trees, but also an understory and ground cover scheme. We've done all of that in this particular, uh, site. Uh, anywhere we can, uh, we, we added trees, we added, uh, flowering trees, uh, some evergreen material to kind of break up the space. Um, and actually a lot of the locations for our trees and ornamental trees are at the corners of the buildings, which really give you kind of a nice breakup of the architecture without blocking a lot of that great detail. So we think we've done a lot for this residential community to really enhance the design, uh, when it comes to landscaping. Um, and something else that's, uh, uh, you know, kind of near as dear to the engineering side of things, and we certainly don't forget about it, forget about it because it's certainly an important feature, uh, which we have a couple stormwater management areas on this particular site. And we just wanted to point out to the group uh, that the landscape plan and the goal for those areas is to provide, uh, you know, native species, well-adapted species that are going to provide a visual, uh, benefit to those communities and not just a background. So there's at least a couple stormwater areas that we've planted with, uh, restoration, native shrubs and appropriate seed mixes. So they'll be attractive as well as they are functional. And then I'll, I'll finish up with just a little bit of, uh, plant material. And I do have an image of the, uh, the light pole that Matt was talking about before, really kind of creating that, that main street area. I want to show you that as well. Uh, but regarding the plant material, uh, typically what we're providing as far as shade or canopy lark, large scale trees for this particular site, uh, we're including red maple, honey locust and plane tree, uh, well-complemented shade trees that will do well in this particular condition, provide you multi-seasonal interest. So we're very happy with those. Ornamental trees are scattered throughout the site and scattered in an abundant way to kind of really enhance the space and, uh, and add a lot of detail throughout. Uh, so in total, we're at about 100 trees planted for the site. And in a lot of those landscapes implanted areas, we've got flowering color, ground cover, uh, where we can add perennial plants, grasses and, and perennial flowers. We have done that for this particular plan. Uh, we have some of the areas that are along the foundations of the buildings that those will certainly be detailed, uh, and landscaped as well. So we think we have a well, uh, landscaped uh, site, not only the, you know, not only the residential zone, which is critically important for, for a marketable, a great residential community, but also that commercial, you know, front end of the site. Uh, we've brought a lot of that landscaping there as well to kind of create a seamless, uh, view. Uh, so Matt, if, if I could, can I share my screen so we could show off that, that light fixture for that main street?
Okay.
Okay. Let's see how this goes. Bear with me, everyone. Uh, I think this should work. Let's see. Okay. Great. If everyone can see my screen, uh, this is just a cut sheet or, or a snapshot view of that great pedestrian scale. Uh, you know, it has that, that compliment of, um, you know, kind of historic, but also contemporary modern. It's that perfect line that really blends well with, uh, with new residential developments. It's got a lot of that old charm in it. So this is a light fixture that we have proposed in the pedestrian areas, right down that residential main street that we think is going to, as you can see in the background in this image, uh, you know, plays really well with the residential architecture, uh, with the landscaping and the amenities that Matt was outlining, uh, you know, it'd be an exciting and, and lively community, uh, right down the main street. So I just wanted to share that. Uh, thank you so much. And I will, uh, pass, uh, pass my time off to our next team member.
Wayne, this is Commissioner Miller. Could I just ask you one question?
Yes, please.
Um, I, I thought I heard multiple times during the presentations in the past that, um, one of the plans was to allow pets, specifically dogs. So as being a dog owner, the first thing I do in the morning is take my dog out. The last thing I do at night is take my dog out. Do you have areas that, you know, for pets to relieve themselves and because that's, that's a big deal?
Uh, yeah, for sure. Matt, Matt could certainly chime in as, as far as if there's designated zones. Uh, but I will tell you that, uh, from a landscape standpoint, uh, we've done a lot of different, um, specifications as far as ground cover and what's appropriate for dogs and edibles and things that way, uh, whether the area is fenced in or just simply more of a casual area. Uh, all of those details can be applied, uh, you know, depending on this commission and/or the, the community's need. But Matt, uh, can you confirm if we've designated any areas or it's a little bit more casual than that for the site?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Wayne. Uh, yeah. So, uh, Commissioner Member Miller there, uh, we don't have any designated areas or any, um, you know, fake fire hydrants or anything like that, uh, adjacent to the residential areas. Um, but we do have all these, um, landscape areas with these benches and, and, um, bike racks lined up, um, around the, the larger landscape, um, islands adjacent to all the main entrances of the buildings. As you can see, these door locations here, um, as well as over here and over here. So, um, you know, there's the landscape areas. Right. Yeah, that, that area is obviously, um, a, a little bit further away. I think if you're running your dog out like I do mine at 10 o'clock at night, I'm not going to be walking down to the trail to, uh, you know, put, get him a couple hundred feet away from the building. But the landscape islands that, that would allow for the, the patch of grass or a, or a sturdy tree to, uh, for a dog to relieve himself are definitely conveniently located at each building entrance. Uh, but we don't, we don't have designated, um, dog areas up in this area.
And, and Matt, I would also add that a lot of communities will also adopt this. It's going to be a more casual kind of based on what building you're in, uh, you know, the stations, you know, the poles and the stations that provide all the kind of the dog amenities, uh, that you would need, uh, bags and things that way. So that's, uh, certainly something that could be, um, as part of this community.
Yeah, we have those.
Mark, do you want to go ahead? Please?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, uh, you've seen my face before, uh, but just for the record, my name is Mark Joyce. I'm the architect on the project. And a little background, um, noise, but, um, so the, the crux of my presentation is going to be basically reinforce what you've heard about main street development. Um, as has been mentioned sort of over the last three weeks, we've really focused our design attention on Main Street and how we can kind of enhance the community feel, uh, but also try to break up some, some visual, um, sort of alleyways that, that are kind of created down the main street. Uh, and some of the rendered views will, will sort of depict that. In addition, the design focused on the clubhouse area, uh, the interior layout plus the exterior functioning of that, of that, um, and defined some of the amenity spaces that are in conjunction with the clubhouse. Um, so this first view we've seen before, uh, but it has been developed further. It's a view at the main entrance into the building. Um, we've increased the landscaping. Um, maybe Matt, you could zoom in if you can. Um, I just sort of want to show, show sort of the crosswalk area, um, the light poles, the plantings, the bench, so on. And this is kind of a repeated theme as you, as you sort of walk down or drive down Main Street. Um, that's intentional, dude. Oops, sorry.
I like, I like to address that noise in the background. Someone at the town of Berlin, uh, it's not muted and, uh, it's coming up, uh, Colin Brolin with Mark and, uh, disturbing the presentation.
Sorry and thank you.
Thank you.
I think it sounds better now, yes?
Sounds better now, yes.
Yeah, okay, okay. Um, and, and like, like Matt had mentioned earlier, you know, we've, we've aligned, uh, these crosswalks, uh, created basically little nodes of sort of community activity, a place to sit down, a place to meet your friends. It also is gonna sort of, you know, decrease the, the, the speed of the traffic through here. Um, number one, they're gonna, people are gonna have to stop at the front entrance, uh, but the more sort of crosswalks we introduce, the lower the traffic speed is going to be and to continue to further enhance that sort of community field. Um, next slide, I would think. Please, Matt. Thank you. Uh, like, like I've said, um, you know, we've, uh, again, we've aligned the crosswalks. We've, we've deliberately put taller trees, taller, taller plantings to break up kind of your line of sight, um, creating shade, uh, where, where lining the street with, uh, the decorative light poles again. So I think you can see, you know, kind of the scale of the project down Main Street starting to come down. Um, and, you know, kind of implies some activity. Encourages people to come outside. Next slide, please.
Mr. Joyce, before you continue.
Yes.
This is your, really, let me just take you back a couple of slides only because I, I like what you're doing so far. And I just want to ask you a question. If we go back to the main entrance of the project itself.
I'll go back to.
Okay, right there, right there. You, you see where your main entrance is? You have all the low growing shrubs. Um, is there any way for us to get a couple of the taller trees in there in that larger island as well as the low growing shrubs? And is there also a way in the boulevard that you could perhaps have one or two of the taller trees there?
Uh, to answer your first question, yes. I would defer to Wayne in terms of the specific planting. Um, but absolutely, um, we could definitely get larger caliber trees right out at that corner.
Yeah. I think that'll help visually.
Your second que- are you talking about sort of an island in the middle of the drive?
Well, you have the gated boulevard, boulevard right there. And I don't know, um, I don't have my tree expert Diane here with me, but this gated boulevard that you have, uh, where the two cars are right between them, is there any way to, to perhaps have a tree or two there? And even on the other side.
Wayne, I'll, Wayne, I'll defer to you in terms of, uh, the success of that tree, right? It's pretty narrow island.
Yeah.
Yep. This is, yeah, this is Wayne. Uh, if you don't mind, I chime in now. Uh, this is Wayne Violet BL Companies. Yeah. And regardless of that particular island, I wouldn't recommend it with the mechanisms that are going to be in that island and any kind of underground service to, to, to do those. I would, I would prefer from a landscape standpoint, I hear what you're saying. I know that would be great, but from a landscape standpoint, I'd rather see the ground plain, um, be covered, you know, and/or we might be doing a, uh, like a, a concrete, you know, pavement or something in that island. But yeah, I wouldn't recommend it with, with how narrow it is, uh, for overhead trees. But certainly the point of putting trees on either side of the drive where the landscape is much wider and the trees are going to be much happier because we like happy trees, uh, that would be the preference.
Okay. All right. I, I'd like to see that happen. Okay. Thank you. That's, that's just a point I wanted to get on record. Okay. And I'll turn it back to you for the rest of the presentation. I'm sorry I didn't interrupt.
No, that's quite all right. Um, this view that you're looking at is basically from the west end of the property, now the rear end of the property, looking back up, uh, back up Main Street. Again, it just shows another, another sort of view of Main Street and its intent of, again, aligning crosswalks, introducing park benches, um, decorative lighting, um, low and tall plantings, uh, again, to sort of bring the scale of the project down, introduce some shade and, uh, interaction and so on. Next slide. Um, as I said, the, the, sort of the, the focus of the last couple of weeks has been in the clubhouse and has been stated in the past, uh, the clubhouse wants to be the hub of this community. Uh, we've, the program, the design program of this building, uh, is, is tailored toward enforcing that uh, community sort of spirit, that community, uh, environment. Uh, we're deliberately putting, um, sort of parts of the, of the development in this building, uh, we're organizing, um, sort of programs and get togethers and so on, um, in this building to just keep, continue to reinforce. We've seen in some other developments, like I think I had said at the last meeting, um, that the community building is, you know, sort of on the outskirts. It doesn't get utilized. Uh, and we're making a deliberate effort to, in fact, push people towards this building on a daily basis. Um, what you're looking at here is, uh, basically the, the community building, uh, the clubhouse. Uh, we're picking up some of our, some of our design cues and our design language from the residential buildings. I'm getting a little feedback. Um, what you see on the sort of right hand side is a patio space, uh, that will, I can talk about a little bit further, uh, in floor plan. Um, what you're also seeing sort of on the, the extreme right side, if you will, is, uh, we have been showing a, a sort of communicating stairway from this uphill side, if you will, down to the lower side of the property. Um, and we've developed that stairway, uh, further. We've introduced a, a roof over it, uh, and incorporated it further into sort of the overall design of this clubhouse area. Uh, next slide.
Okay, wait, wait, wait. Before we go on. Okay, wait, wait, wait. Before we go on, can we go back to that slide? Just another suggestion, if I may? Because you're at the point where the umbrellas are that you want that to be like part of like the community. And you're inviting, okay, I'm with you on that. Can we perhaps entertain the idea of the fencing being like a black estate fencing? And can you do something with flower boxes or plantings there? So that if folks do meet their friends for a beer or a glass of wine or a cup of joe. And they're sitting down, they're not just gonna be surrounded by, you know, just. Concrete, but it's gonna give them almost like a community garden feel to it. So that people will actually want to meet their friends there. They'll make it a point of destination because it'll be a very pleasant. Area to be in because they'll be surrounded with lots of good things and birds and wonderful, you know, dogs barking, walking by. Everybody's happy.
Exactly, yes, yes to your comments. We can, we can develop the patio further further. As we, as we look at it in floor plan, I think you'll kind of get the idea of where we're going with it. And it's gonna, it's absolutely gonna reinforce what you're what you're stating. This next slide, Matt, I guess, please. On the downhill side, this is where all the magic happens. We can see there's obviously a pool. Sort of the shape and limits of the pool are are. Still sort of in development, but we're taking advantage of sort of the topography, the uphill and low side, low hillside. We have a basement level that's primarily reserved for a fitness center. But it's also pretty, it's a pretty flexible space. We could reconfigure for particular events, birthday parties. So on, as you can see, we have a deck on the ground level, which is, I'll call it Main Street level. And then a second floor. Which is primarily the the management office. I guess, next slide. So we're looking at Main Street level or ground level. Main Street is sort of on the on the up cheat. And we have a main entrance sort of tucked into the volume of the building. Come into a a main entry atrium. The stair that brings you up to the second floor and down to the basement, the intent of that stair is to be an open balustrade. We only really have a catwalk connector at the second floor. And the intent is that basically if you walk through the front door of this building, you're gonna be able to see come straight through to the pair of doors. And out to the balcony. We want to create a light and airy environment. As you enter this space. To the plan left of this view, we have the lounge in a concierge space. So basically, the concierge is going to function as essentially, you know, your leasing agent. Your day to day kind of concierge, if you have any concerns or or need some assistance, so that's what the person is there for. We're also gonna be incorporating sort of a coffee bar and and beer taps. So if you can come in, you can come in in the morning. Grab a cup of coffee, coming in the afternoon, there'll be, there'll be beer available, glass of bottle of wine or a glass of wine. This lounge space, the way it's set up right now, you know, some soft seating, a pool table or billiard table. When we have kind of a, you know, sort of a bar top or a high top table across the backside. But again, that can be reconfigured for a birthday party, more sort of dining room dining tables. Continuing further to the left, we have that patio that is deliberately attached to the building and accessible to the building. So if you, in fact, do have a party or a function, you can take advantage of that patio and have your guests have the party. Allow it onto the patio. Again, it's an outdoor space connected to the indoor. On the right hand flank of the building, we have the mailroom. We have two hundred units and that's a space for two hundred mailboxes. We have sort of a work table with. With, you know, recite paper recycling and a lot of different functions. That's gonna get developed further, but sort of in the developments that we are. Working on of this size, that's kind of an ample space for all of that function.
Mark, Mark, this is Commissioner Miller again. I guess in the mailroom with two hundred mailboxes, are you making provisions for? You know, like Amazon package deliveries and things like that?
We do have to develop this a little bit further. I mean, we do need sort of larger kind of package depository. At present, you know, we're kind of anticipating that being captured at the concierge space. You know, but we're sort of still working through some of those details. Another component that we're seeing a lot in multifamily developments is. Like refrigerated storage for like peapod and food delivery and things like that. So. You might see this floor plan tweak a little bit, but the basic program components are gonna remain sort of the same. Does that answer the question?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay. By code, we need toilet rooms, so we're providing toilet rooms. We also have a kitchen. Not, you know, not huge, but an efficient kitchen area. It's to support basically the lounge area. So if you were to have a party, you wanted to heat up food, you wanted to prepare food. That's where, that's what you would do there. Now, pretty sizable balcony off the back of the property or off of the back of the building overlooking the pool area. Next slide, unless there's more questions on sort of this floor plan? No? I'll keep going. This is the upper level. This is the management office, like I had, like I had mentioned. As you can kind of see through the center portion of the building, you have the open stairwell. Sort of a a catwalk, open baluster, catwalk. And then views down to the lower, sort of lower level. On plan left is where the where the management office is. And on sort of the right side is is kind of a multi multi purpose room. You could reserve it for if you were to have some type of a meeting. The management office can have can have larger kind of community meetings there. I could even rent it out for, you know, Berlin Town Meeting. This, it's pretty flexible in its uses. One particular use could even be a theater room. Again, customary toilet rooms on this level. Uh, next slide. The lower level, which is down at the pool level, like I had said before, it's primarily sort of reserved to fitness. But again, you know, it's it's a pretty flexible space. We can reconfigure sort of the uses pretty easily. The the equipments that we're anticipating. Are gonna be bicycles, treadmills, rowers, things like that. So they're not. Enough bolted into the floor, they can be moved around. We do have toilet room, larger toilet room, given the fact that, you know, we have to accommodate the pool and patio area. So those toilet rooms are larger in their capacity. And then sort of on the left side, you'll see that we're sort of capturing underneath the patio area. Of of storage, storage room. It's not gonna be a conditioned space, not really gonna be, let's say, weather tight. Because it's a deck, it has a deck roof to it, so it's gonna be a good place to store all the patio furniture and so on in the winter. Further, continuing continuing sort of further left, you can see the stairs that come down from the Main Street side. What's from Main Street. Uh, next slide, but I think that might actually wrap, wrap me up.
Okay, Mr. Miller. No, 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 you're you're okay. I'm just, I'm trying to try and manipulate this computer here. I have a question about the swimming pool. This is the chairperson. Um, this, the swimming pool, because it appears to be outside and we are in New England, are you gonna have any sort of solar heating elements for the pool? Or have you ever thought about that?
In terms of. Yeah.
Peter Diaddio is here. We don't know how I'm gonna heat it. We we know it needs to be heated. Solar people have continued to pester us about it. We may, we may keep it heated a a more typical way. Because it's New England, it's, you know, not good sixty months, maybe four or five months. But it's a feature that apartment dwellers seem to want to attract to. So we'll have that amenity and there's room in our lower level to have additional amenities, the new paddle tennis, whatever it's called. But at this point, it's it's our amenity area and I don't know how it's gonna be heated.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to see if if that was along with the thought process, because I know that they do have, you know, there's solar covers you can put on, but there's also. I've seen people who actually have solar heaters that are part of the roof. Now. It's not the whole roof and it's not the big panels, but they're actually almost like little, it's almost like a tubing. That kind of runs at the lower part of the roof. And it'll hook up directly to the pool and and provides heat that way. I have seen that. I I will admit, ironically enough, I've seen it more down south. For use on personal swimming pools than I have here. You would think down south they have, you know, wonderful weather all the time. So, but I I did wanna see if you were gonna try to do something in the ways of heating the pool to get a longer life use out of the pool for the year.
But that's that's a terrific comment and it's 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 really something that we're considering and that we may do and we definitely will heat the pool. However. We may use solar in a lot additional areas than heating the pool. There are, the solar panel becomes more and more efficient. And our roof style is being very tall and there's a flat roof in the middle of them. We can utilize some of those areas to provide solar. But it's not, those aren't ironed out yet. Solar people are all over me to. To make that kind of recommendation. We're not that far along to make that kind of decision, so. But it's a great comment and if we do have solar panels, I'm sure a part of them will heat the pool.
Yeah, all right. Well, that would make the people a lot happier.
Well, we definitely will have a heated pool. No question about it.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. All right, I did not, please go ahead with the presentation.
Mark, this is Commissioner Miller again. Could we just go back to the previous slide for a second? So I know this. Sorry, I know this isn't necessarily cast in stone, but I would just. Ask you to maybe make some, give some thought to where the toilets are located relative to the swimming pool, because the way you have it now, people would have to come from the outside from the swim. Walk through the fitness area dripping water all over the place. You know, a lot of times you'll see some outside access to the toilets also. I mean, they get a fair amount of use in the summertime from people in the swimming.
Yeah, very, very good point. In fact, you know, we were, we've been talking about. Increasing the amount of not necessarily windows, but maybe there are more patio doors. Kind of along the plan, we call it plan south and plan east side of the building to, you know, increase, increase that. So the very valid point.
And we definitely can add a door on the right side, no problem.
Right, exactly. Exactly. And we can change, you know, we can change floor material, one that's sort of more, it's more dedicated to a fitness environment, one that's more conducive to a wet environment.
Yeah, I concur that Mr. Miller's observation is a is a proper one and also I'm more, I am definitely more in favor of more patio doors. More windows, more light.
Yep.
Okay.
Man, I think that concludes it, Matt. If you just wanna move forward a little bit. That was pretty, pretty much the crux of what I really, yeah, I'll start, I'll stop there. And throw it back to you, Matt, or is it going to Scott?
Matt.
Thank you, everyone.
Matt, why don't you go ahead and talk about alternative uses for the hotel site and then we'll ask Scott to comment after you.
Absolutely. Again, for the record, Matt Bruton from BL Companies. So one of the comments that we received at the last hearing was in regards to this fourth phase of development. Which is roughly circled and read here. From the get go, the desire was always to have a hotel. As part of this development, as this has been conceptualized and designed over the past year. Obviously, COVID has dramatically affected the travel industry, so the developer has been unable to obtain a end user at this time. So the hope is for recovery in the sector so that a hotel can be built. But we wanted to show you two alternatives in case that doesn't come to fruition. One option we do show here is a simple medical office building space. This can be seamlessly added into the greater overall development with the retail to the south. And the residential to the west. And another option that will be considered is just a simple twelve thousand square foot retail space as well. Again, could be seamlessly fit into the space that would be occupied currently by the hotel. That would, you know, be integral to the main entrance and the parking that does surround for the southern retail and the western residential area. And just to be clear, we are still, the application in front of you does have the hotel. That is what we would be seeking approval for. And we are aware that if that hotel does change to one of these alternatives. That we would need to come back to this commission for permission to modify the plans. We just simply wanted to demonstrate that if the hotel. Industry doesn't recover, as we all hope so, that there are options for additional uses in this space. Along the Berlin Turnpike. And with that, I will just move forward to the traffic memo that was produced by Scott.
Excuse me, Commissioner Rogan, if you don't mind. Can you go back to the last slide?
Absolutely.
I know that you were saying that you'd wanna come back later. I'm just wondering if you have a timeframe and how long you're willing to wait on the hotel. Is it something that's gonna be a year, five years, you're gonna wait for that to recover and just leave it open or, you know?
May I comment, Mr. Rogan? I have continual inquiries for alternative uses for this site continuously right now. And if we can make the right deal, I'll be right away. I'm not waiting for the hotel. If the hotel doesn't step up, I've got super six on my back constantly, but. That they, you know, want me to put up most of the money, right? So if there's a, an operator that wants to put up. Enough money to make it a fair deal, I'd move forward with that. But there's been car wash inquiries, there's been inquiry for the thirty two bed. A veteran kind of medical use. There's been inquiries for other medical uses. So I'm not waiting for anything. The right deal comes along and we're gonna come in with an alternative site plan. But we need to have that deal. I I I've on that little retail building, I've got two or three little tenants. And it's just that right now I'm focused on the apartments. I I don't wanna build that little retail building in front just now because. We've gotta put together all this access and all this Main Street and all this entrance and the traffic signal and. All the strong infrastructure. I'm willing to move forward on the small gas station because it works one way or another. That fueling station and C store, not only is it a terrific amenity for the neighborhood, it doesn't really need Main Street. In other words, it it works well with Main Street because the connectivity that we created, but it it survives on its own. So we have that tenant, we've signed that lease. As soon as we get our approval from you, we'll start building it. That's why it's number one on the agenda. But we're not waiting for anything on on lot number four. As soon as we make the right deal, we'll proceed.
Scott, I think I'll pass the baton back to you if there are no further questions at the time.
Okay, hopefully it don't want to hear me and I'm not breaking up.
Glad you're here, Scotty.
Scott Hesketh, we were asked to take a look at the. Thank you very much. We were asked to take a look at the traffic generation and parking. Impacts of. If we take out the hotel and replace it with a twelve thousand square foot retail building. Or a seventy five hundred square foot medical office building, what would be the impacts of those? what would be the impacts of those two developments vis-à-vis the hotel use? In terms of trip generation, the hundred-room hotel is projected to generate fifty-three, sixty-one, and seventy-two trips during the peak hours. The medical office would be significantly less than that in terms of trip generation. At twenty-eight, thirty-one, and twenty-three trips during the peak hours. So that would be a plus-plus for the development if it went in that direction. The, those 12,000 square foot retail use would have a difference of one hundred and ten, one hundred and twenty-three, and one hundred and sixteen trips during the peak hours respectively. Those numbers represent an increase of fifty-seven, sixty-two, and forty-four trips during the peak hours, which is about one new trip per minute, depending on the peak hour. Based on the calculated levels of service at the proposed signalized site driveway, we believe that those traffic volumes could readily be. I want to go away now with those alternative plans. In terms of parking activity, again, we took a look at the Urban Land Institute, the ULI, shared use park. Projected the peak parking demand of those two uses, comparing it to the peak parking use of the hotel. And if I can scroll down a little bit. Having trouble with my internet access here, sorry about that. Based on the ULI methodologies, the proposed hotel had a parking demand of seventy-eight, I'm sorry, seventy-nine and eighty-eight parking spaces during the weekday and Saturday peak hours. The 12,000 square foot retail building would have a peak parking demand of ninety-four and a hundred and two spaces. I'm sorry, the, the non-residential development of the site would have a peak parking demand of ninety-four and a hundred and two spaces. And I believe with the retail facility, we're proposing one hundred spaces on that parcel alone. So the, that parcel alone would almost be able to accommodate all of the retail development traffic during the peak demand. With the medical office in place, the non-residential development would have a parking demand of eighty-seven or fifty-seven spaces. So based on the ULI numbers, any mix of land uses as proposed, the proposed site plans would provide more than enough parking to accommodate those uses in the non-residential spaces of the development. We submitted a report for the commission, a report dated April thirteenth. It has three tables attached to it, which present the information just discussed. And I'll be happy to address any questions the commission may have at this time.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Huskett. This is Joan Vili, Chairperson. I just wanted, I was trying to listen and take notes on the parking spaces that you said would be available if it was a hotel, or if it was a retail, or if it was like a medical facility. Can you just, can you just go back over those numbers again for me?
Certainly, if you look, you have the tables?
I do not have, no, I do not. I didn't want to rustle too much paper here because I was afraid I was going to distract the other commissioners. So I do not have the tables here.
Understood, understood.
But I, but you said that.
They're on the PowerPoint, Scott. They're on the PowerPoint, you've got to turn back a couple pages.
Okay.
Other way. They're up on the corner.
No.
Let me just say, in my report, I stated that with the hotel use, the hotel, the existing residential building with the bank, and the convenience store use have peak parking demand of seventy-nine spaces and eighty-eight spaces during their, during the peak hours.
Okay.
For the retail, the peak parking demand would go from ninety-four and one hundred and two spaces. And with the medical office space in place of the hotel, the peak parking demand would be eighty-seven and fifty-seven spaces. Now, it's my understanding that the alternate plan with the resident, the retail development has a hundred and fifty parking spaces shown on it, which is forty-eight more than the peak demand. And the alternate plan with the medical office space has a hundred and eighty-two parking spaces. So more than enough parking for either of those uses.
Those numbers are correct, Scott.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure I heard them correctly. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Any other questions for Scott? Scott, thank you for making the effort to be available tonight. It's much appreciated.
Oh, hang on as long as, again.
Thank you.
In case anything else comes up. Thank you much.
Go to the next slide, Matt, please.
Peter, does the commissioners know that Scott's coming out of the hospital or is in the hospital for this meeting?
I did mention that earlier, but.
Yeah.
So we appreciate his efforts, for sure. So what we've presented to you tonight, we think, is a full response to the matters that commissioners raised at the earlier public hearings. I want to emphasize again that the plans that were submitted with our original application back in October, I believe, really represent everything that you've seen. It's simply a matter of providing you with greater and greater detail as we drill down into the various aspects of this development. It certainly is a significant development. But between Matt Bruton's firm and Mark Joyce's firm and with Scott's, Scott Huskett's firm's advice, we've been able to break it apart and present you with the various aspects of it, all of which leading, we believe, to a conclusion that, first of all, we qualify for all of the requirements that you could impose or expect for a zone change to the zone zoning designation that we seek. And second, that the plan that you have before you meets and exceeds all of the requirements for a special permanent site plan approval. I just want to try to get everybody back focused on what you see before you, what you've seen before you over the past few public hearing sessions. As I indicated, we seek a zone change. And as part of that zone change, just to reiterate, we ask that the commission make a determination with respect to the ten-acre parcel, two-acre division of property that could be an interpretation of a regulation. Or if you feel that every parcel should consist of ten acres, as I indicated, we can meet that requirement as well, although we certainly favor that which your expert, Dr. Poland, indicated was more logical and preferable. If you approve the zone change, we would then ask you to approve the site plan and special permit applications. As a master plan, I want to emphasize that, for example, with the hotel, if we come back with a hotel use, we are going to bring back a building for you to review as to architecture, landscaping, design, before it can be offered for, for construction. We would need to bring that back to you. At the moment, the only thing you're indicating is that that would be a hotel use under the current master plan. As Matt Bruton indicated, if there's a change to either of the other alternatives, we would be back to you with respect to that. Mr. Diaddio indicated the convenience store and gasoline filling station stand alone at the, at the end of the property. But we have spent a great deal of time and effort and with the able assistance of both Dr. Poland and Maureen, created a significant amount of connectivity so that our residents can make use of that amenity without getting into their car to go to the convenience store safely, walk through the site using crosswalks and sidewalks. The connectivity of this site is extremely important. Two hundred units, we've been over the clubhouse and its function. We submitted a three-page summary of what we think the community spirit that can be achieved here will be. A lot of what Mark Joyce talked about was in line with that and that everything that he designed and that Matt Bruton designed was designed to accomplish that, all complemented by Wayne Violet's landscape plan to create scale and walkability within the center. It will, the residential portion will be separated by key access from the more public areas towards the Berlin Turnpike. We, as Scott Huskett reported to you before, if this commission approves the zone change and the special permanent site plan, we would then continue our communication with the Connecticut Department of Transportation with respect to creating the signalized intersection that we're projecting out on the Berlin Turnpike. We've offered walking trails over about four acres of the property, including private access for residents and also public access with parking near the convenience store gas station. If the commission determines that it is the ten-acre for each parcel requirement that the zone regulation imposes, then we would encumber the rear portion of the property with a conservation easement to leave it permanently as open space, but it would remain a part of each of those parcels. If you determine that we can have lesser parcels in accordance with what we think, we think the regulation means and what your consultant has suggested it may mean, then we could either deed that property to the land trust or, as one commissioner suggested, offer it to the town of Berlin. I will say that I haven't had much luck offering land to towns in the recent past. They seem to be very reluctant to take on more property, more responsibility, and more maintenance than otherwise they would have. But if the commission indicates that we should first offer it to the town, we would certainly do that if we can create smaller parcels within our development. If the town doesn't want it, we would offer it to the land trust. If the land trust didn't want it for some reason, then we would encumber it with private conservation easements and retain ownership of it. Part of our proposal is to create forty units that meet the moderate income standards for the state of Connecticut. We presented you with that affordability plan. It's been endorsed by your housing authority. And we have verified that those forty units will qualify under the statutory provisions as Berlin attempts to meet the 10% threshold set out by Connecticut General Statutes A-30G. There had been some confusion over whether or not they would qualify. And I think that we've demonstrated by the statutory provisions and by communication from the Department of Housing that both we and Dr. Poland had, that these units would, in fact, meet that requirement. In summary, everything that we've presented to you is in direct consideration of the regulation that you adopted about two years ago. It meets and exceeds all of your expectations as stated in that zone change. And as I indicated before, we meet or exceed the special permanent site plan requirements. We need no waivers, we need no variances, we need no relief to comply with your regulations. I think that Mr. Diaddio has rolled up his sleeves and created an opportunity for the town of Berlin that creates housing opportunities, it creates employment opportunities, and it creates the new tax base on the Berlin Turnpike, all exactly as you contemplated when you adopted this possible zone. Honestly, we really don't have anything else to offer in terms of the details of this development. We've reached down now into each aspect of the property and demonstrated to you that this is potentially a development of the highest quality, something that will stand on the Berlin Turnpike for a long, long time. It has an excellent example of really performance zoning utilized at its best. Everybody who is on our team is happy to answer questions that you might have. And I can say that we would ask you tonight to, unless there is some significant issue outstanding that we're not aware of, that we would like to have the public hearing closed so that the commission can move to deliberations with respect to this application. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you, thank you, Mr. Diaddio. I do have a couple of questions before I turn to the commission to see if they also have some or the public. I want to go to the front of the project itself. Have we talked about what type of signage or entranceway you're going to have into the project? I know you showed me this wonderful green area, and I think that that's great. But have we talked about what the sign is going to be at the entranceway? I mean, to name the project, so to speak.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes, is that Mr.? Yes, Commissioner.
Commissioner Wolman. Won't they have to come back to us for the sign? Or are we doing that part of this project? Because I knew any signage that comes up, they usually have to come back to staff.
But normally we have some, so we're, sorry?
May I just add, for both the commissioners and Madam Chairman, we do have an aerial that shows the locations of some signs, but they're blank. Because we will have to come back and comply with your signage regulation. We showed on our plan the approximate location for those signs, one in front of each commercial building. I'm asking my team over here to try to find that, that aerial. It's, it wasn't a PowerPoint, it was a Mark Joyce effort. And it showed, yeah, that, that probably shows where we marked out where they were going to go. But we have a beautiful picture that, but it, so we would definitely have to come back for signs. And each, each commercial building is allowed a pylon per your regulation, and that's what we would work to. I don't have those, there you go. We don't have those exact right now because I don't have tenants. We, we do, we will have the sign in front of the gas station, right where it's depicted. But they, again, will have to come back for branding, and I'm not sure if it will be a Sunoco or a different brand, which is why we're not at the sign level yet. But we will come back with a sign package for the individual tenants.
Okay, Maureen?
And this is Commissioner Wolman again, and that kind of was my point. Like, we can deal with that later until he determines who the tenants are and going in. It doesn't really, you know, make much sense to discuss that tonight. We can take care of that at another point, is my thought process.
Well, that's, that's a good thought process. I just didn't want it to get past us where we don't have some sort of thread that we wanted to talk about the signage. But I think Maureen wanted to chime in on something.
Hey, one of my comments, I was going to just point out is that the rendering, and this is Maureen speaking, I'm sorry for the record, that the, some of the renderings show signage that doesn't appear to be in compliance with the zoning regulations. So as is typical, and as Commissioner Wolman pointed out, we would be making the recommendation to the commission to have standard comments within any positive decision. That would include signage to be reviewed for compliance with the regulations and return. and returned as necessary depending on those regulations. So.
Okay, terrific.
Right, and we certainly would agree with that. The rendering is just a photo.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure we don't lose track of that. That's really important.
Sure.
Um, I just also want to revisit the walking trail really quick and the access for the residentials, um, to the walking trail. I mean, um, can we just, is it going to be only from one part of the, um, development?
Uh, no, I'm glad you mentioned that too, uh, Madam Chairman. My, my guys will, will find a good picture for that. But on, in the back of the residential area, um, there's an access point with a dog, uh, you know, little garbage can and, and little bags. And there's also a similar, and a bench, and there's also a similar on the other end of the walking trail, which is, would be for the public, same thing, a dog station and, and, and a bench. And so, but the residential side has a key code. So the public can't access this, the residential area, but they can access the walking trail. So, um, uh, if you notice where Matt's drawing the circle now, that's a, a footbridge that goes over a particular, um, uh, protected area that we got our wetlands permit for, uh, cause there is a wetland intermediate, intermediate stream there. Um, so that the, um, the customer either of the C store or the public, because we have some extra parking spaces over there, um, designated for public access, can go over the foot, footbridge and enjoy the walking trails with their dog. And there's, they got a dog station there and we've got dog station trail. By the way, Commissioner, we have a dog washing, um, room in every building, in the lower level of every building. So dogs and, and pets seem to unlike twenty years ago. Right now they're, uh, a pet, um, more than fifty percent of the tenants have pets. So we want to accommodate, um, that kind of activity. And so the walking trail will be open, will have access, uh, from the C store and will have, uh, protected access for the residents where you need a key card in order to get back into the neighborhood.
Okay, that's, that's very good. Thank you for that. And then, um, I just wanted to ask one last question of the architect, if I may. Um, and I just wanted to, I, I know that you show us the renderings of what the buildings look like. And I think you're trying, you guys are trying really hard to sort of warm everything up and break everything up a little bit to give it some depth and character, which is great. The palette colors that you have, I know you're using brick. I mean, a lot of people have used stone recently. That's a, the big push is that stone veneer. Um, but are these the colors that you're going with? Are you going with the real barnyard red brick or, or is that, is that just not a true color? I don't know.
Uh, the, the color palette is representative of, of where we've landed, yes.
And I think that, that's...
Be careful, Peter Diaddio is a mason by trade, so be careful where you go with this.
I'm a bricklayer and that, and those little, that little stone, that little artificial stone that you stick onto the plywood, I mean, it's just as expensive as bricks. Bricks last forever and they don't change with, they, they don't change with, uh, motif and with modernness. You know, bricks are, you put up the bricks on a Mark Twain house and they're still modern today. That little stone veneer, we used to put it on front of IHOP, but it became out of date. And so you throw them away. Now there's a new kind of stone. It's, it's, it's fake. Bricks are rock solid, they last forever.
Yeah, I, I understand that. No, no, that's okay. I understand the, 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 the desire for the brick and yes, um, it's just, I, I'm just still trying to see if there's anything else in the building that I can make a suggestion on here. Um, and so that's why I was just kind of looking at it.
Well, we, we added, we added that white trim. I think that was a great suggestion, by the way, that, that trim around those windows. Uh, i- if he zooms in, I think you'll find it, especially on Main Street, much better, much more revealing, much architectural. That was a great suggestion. You see how the Mark zoomed in on that show? So that was a very good suggestion, uh, Madam Chairman.
It does make it pop a little bit more, which is, which is great. Okay. All right, I think, um, I'm, those are the questions that I had that I written down during the presentation. So I just want to make sure that I, I got those on the record. Is there anyone else, um, on the commission before I go to the public? Who has any questions?
Yes, this is Commissioner Ziggman.
Commissioner Wolman.
Okay, I'm going to go to Mr. Ziggman first and then to Mr. Wolman. All right, go ahead, Tim.
Okay, I, I just, uh, I think that, uh, you'll, uh, the applicant will see that the hotel will be in demand. Uh, being in the tour and charter bus, uh, industry, uh, that has come up to about eighty-five percent of capacity in the last month. You'll see that those hotel, hotels starting to be, uh, used. Uh, the other thing was the, uh, zoning with the acreage. Uh, and I think, uh, we'll talk, talk to the doctor, uh, Paul, Paul about it. But, uh, I think the, he understood that the, uh, reason for it was the consolidation of smaller lots to bring it up to ten acre lot size in order to lau- uh, allow larger developments like this. Uh, and that was the reason why the zoning was, uh, written that way. Uh, so I think the ten acre lot size would be the, the way to go with that. Uh, I think the development in the whole, you guys have done a great job of making a high-class, uh, development. And I thank you for that.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, Commissioner Wolman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make a comment. Um, I, I, I have a, a child who's involved in these type of projects in Boston and the projects are really upscale. And I think what the applicant has done, bringing this project to our town Berlin, uh, is comparable to the stuff I'm seeing in Boston. And I think his staff a- a- and the engineers and landscape and everybody on his team has presented an outstanding plan that I think will be an asset to our community. And I also wanted to just chime in, and I hate to talk just to talk, but I'm doing it, uh, that I think Maureen and her folks coordinating with all these people have done a nice job together with, uh, the applicant staff to bring a project that I think we can be proud of and one that I think will service our community and the, and the tenants in there and the retail, uh, tenants also. So I just wanted to tell you, I thought this was a fantastic project.
Thank you, Commissioner Wolman. Maureen really appreciates and I'm sure the applicant does too and the rest of the staff. Yes, and, and consultants as well. Thank you. Yeah. Any other commissioners before we go to the public?
Uh, yes, I just, I just, Commissioner Ziggman, I just wanted, Dr. Poland's still on, I saw him on earlier.
Um, I don't know...
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, here he is.
I, I wanted to reassure your opinion on that, uh, two acre, ten acre thing.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I agree, I believe, I agree with how you explained it and the idea that the intent was to consolidate smaller lots into, uh, into a larger area of development. Uh, I still believe a conflict exists between that language that states there is a ten acre minimum lot size. You know, I, 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 I think there's a conflict here. So I do think the commission may need to make an interpretation or that there may need, at some point, not immediately, may need to be a text amendment to clean this up, uh, or to clarify it, so.
Thank you for reiterating.
May I make a comment? May I make, may I, I make a comment at the applicant, as a developer and just for the commission, commissioners to think about. And, and the ten acres, what, as my, as my attorney, I'm Peter Diaddio speaking, I'm a developer. Uh, as my attorney pointed out, we can comply one way or another. But what the commission might think about is that those commercial lots, if, if you have a ten acre parcel with residential and commercial on it, while the developer wants to get them developed, they'll stay fallow. Because you're not going to finance them. You're not going to be able to finance that residential project with those commercial properties. Yeah, and that's why, uh, Dr. Poland, uh, stated when he says a ten acre parcel is smart for the assemblage to make a mixed-use development. But the uses within that partial should follow the underlying zone. And especially because if you look at that zone and you see that residential is only allowed three hundred feet back, you know, forcing the use on the Berlin Turnpike to be commercial development. And I, and I think that's appropriate and I think that's right. But if you require ten acre parcels, that means you've got a three hundred foot by ten acres, three thousand feet for one commercial lot. And so all of a sudden you start scratching your head and you say, is that what they meant? So if you want to have a gas station, it's hard to have one on ten acres. I happen to because I'm going to give the land away and, and, and walk dogs on it. But the next guy can't, right? So, you know, and then if you put apartments in the back and you want to say you're going to put commercial in the front, how do you finance it? And how do you sell that piece or how do you lease that piece? You know, it, it, it becomes cumbersome. Uh, we can do it because we've got thirty-five acres. But you've got to think about, you know, how that, how does that little seventy-five hundred square foot retail get built? On a ten acre parcel, you know, with residential in the back? You know, and then, so you see you tie these pieces together and then they're not financeable or they're not developable, you know, because it's likely that we sell the hotel, you know, and let the hotel guide develop. And by the way, uh, Doc, that, that, Mr. Ziggman, I read today that the res, uh, that Super Six, their, their housing, their occupancy rate is up fifty-seven percent. So it is coming back. It's not back yet, but it's coming back. Yeah.
That's correct. It's coming back fast.
But I don't know, Doctor, I don't know if you want to comment on that, but I just think some of those things are left unsaid.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with your perspective. Uh, there are challenges on the developer's side, on the owner's side, uh, related to it. So, you know, i- i- right, right now, uh, it, it's creating a conflict because it is, it is leaving it open to interpretation. So the, uh, the cleanest thing to do for the commission moving forward would be to amend it. And I think it's just a very simple text amendment, uh, that would clarify where it says the, uh, minimum lot size is ten acres. Uh, that could be replaced with either the underlying zone or just clearly state two acres as the underlying zone is, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, any other commissioners before we go to the public? Okay, moving on to the public because we are in the public hearing. Is there anyone on board who wishes to address the commission regarding this application? Okay, hearing none, coming back to the commission. Do we have any other questions? Okay, one last comment that I have, um, and this goes again to the architect, um, looking at the buildings. Um, just a thought is that we may want to try to do something with shutters on the buildings that don't have the balconies there. I mean, I don't, I don't know if that would work with the shutters, just to break up some of that. That's just a thought. I don't know. Anyway, anyone else? Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, Commissioner Wolman.
Okay, that's Steve Wolman, uh, makes a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a, a second just for discussion?
Timothy Ziggman, second.
Okay, thank you, because I think Maureen, uh, we're still in the discussion before we move the motion.
Um, this is Maureen. I just wanted to, um, point out that a good number of the, the items that I was going to point out to the commission that they needed to, um, to take into consideration, um, such as that lot, lot size discussion you were just having, the signage, um, some of the, the provisions of the, that, that you've seen throughout the, this public hearing process. Um, that during your consideration, just make sure that, um, those have been responded to. I think that, that I knocked just about every one of them off the list this evening as they pulled together this, um, summary and final, um, response to the questions that you've had. Um, but would request that, or not request, would have you consider whether, um, each of you, which is much more difficult when you're not in person for me to kind of gauge how many notes and whatnot each person's taken. But in your motion, you may want to, or if you go into deliberations, um, all the conditions and whatnot that, that should be reiterated in that motion and, um, make sure that those who are pointed out are brought all together as, into a summary of, of that conditions of approval. Um, they've been done in iterations, not kind of brought together as a single, um, document, proposed motion, so to speak, if that's what you, um, like to have done for you. Um, and also, there was one other thing, I'm sorry. Um, oh, that I also suggest that your request of the applicant, and I, um, discussed this earlier with, um, the applicant, that for the decision-making and crafting of the decision, that they create a table of contents, so to speak, that gives a list of each plan and its title, date and review, up through revision dates, so that the plan reference as the project gets built over time, we have a set of plans that you know you reviewed and those are the ones that you're approving and they can stay as the official record. That, thank you.
All right, so we have the motion to close the public hearing. We have a second. Do we have any other further discussion? All right, so all in favor of closing the public hearing? Do we need a roll call on this or just, uh, just say aye?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Okay, so the public hearing is now closed. All right, terrific, thank you. Um, going on to our next item and that is the proposed amendment to the Berlin zoning regulations. Timothy Sullivan has wired for the new section, which is, uh, six G three double E gasoline filling stations. This is continued. Um, it was opened on March, uh, eighteenth. Okay. All right, so we're in the public hearing of this and I see that Attorney Sullivan was with us, Mr. Sullivan. Um, terrific. And what do we have here?
Good evening.
Yes, please. Uh, yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. Last time we had some technical issues. So I'm glad that things are moving better at the start. Uh, once again, Attorney Timothy Sullivan of the law firm Woznowski and Sullivan. As I indicated during the March eighteenth, uh, public hearing presentation, my client is proposing a text change to Berlin zoning regulations, a new section six G three E E. Uh, unlike the, um, last, um, public hearing, which was a, a, a very complicated, um, site-specific proposal with architects involved and many engineers. Um, and I, and I, and I should say, I, I agree with the, with the, uh, brick, with Mr. Diaddio, especially in light of, uh, Berlin's, uh, history and legacy of, of brickyards. Uh, I think it's very appropriate. But given that, uh, be, before the commission tonight, um, from my, my client's perspective, doesn't have that, that level of detail and scrutiny that needs to be applied to, um, a text change as opposed to, uh, a site-specific proposal. Uh, for, for that reason, um, it's more of a philosophical question before the commission tonight as, as opposed to all the detail that sits involved with a site-specific proposal. Um, with that being said, my, my, my client is, is hopeful for a closer public hearing tonight and, uh, for a possible vote on the text change. In, in light of that, um, I could, I could be brief or, or I could be, uh, give a more lengthy presentation. In, in comparing the notes from the, from the previous public hearing, Commissioner Legnani has been seated for this hearing. And, um, I would like to, I would have to be comprehensive in my approach. I think we discussed this at length and very, in a very comprehensive manner last time. Uh, Commissioner Biella was in attendance last time. He wasn't seated, but he was in attendance. Um, Commissioner Zarabozo was in attendance and he was seated. Um, I don't know whether the commission would, would entertain, uh, seating Commissioner Zarabozo just for this hearing, um, tonight, um, and I, I, I'd throw that out there first. Uh, I don't know whether the commission is intending on making a decision tonight. It, it sounded like we were close last time, um, but before I get into some of the specifics, I would just ask, I would ask, uh, the chairperson Dealey, um, if, uh, if that would be appropriate.
Um, yes, it would. It would be appropriate because they were seated on this item last go around. So we would, we would have Peter Zarabozo and then we would have Mr. Biella, I believe.
Yes, Mr. Biella, yes, thank you.
Um, yeah.
It's nothing against Commissioner Legnani, I'd more, more like to, like to have him seated for my next public hearing, uh, which, which opens, um, it will be opening tonight. But in light of that, I can be very brief, I think, um, be willing to entertain any, any questions. Um, it's important to emphasize that the proposed new section only applies to properties in the BT zone, uh, that are greater than two acres in size. Before reviewing briefly the proposal, I don't want to be too redundant from the March 18th presentation. Um, but I would like to address one of the concerns of, of Commissioner Millard, that minimum square footage of 5,000 square feet for the building that services customers, the, the convenience store or in slang and, um, the jargon of the industry, the C store, may be too large and would hinder smaller operators in favor of larger operations. My client and I recognize and agree with Commissioner Millard and this concern and amend the proposal tonight to reduce that to 3,500 square feet as we discussed at the last presentation. Um, with that said, I think we addressed everything at the last public hearing. Um, I don't want to regurgitate everything. I'm more than willing to answer questions again. Um, just, just to address the, uh, commission or the staff comments, there was a, a typo in my proposed new section six G three EE, specifically subsection triple I where I referenced CCD two. And I stated it last, last time and I'll repeat it, that I, I believe, well, I know that that should have sa- stated DT two or rather BT one as, um, as opposed to the CCD two. And I apologize for that, uh, for that error. Uh, the reason, um, we, we've adopted, as I stated at the last hearing, we, we adopted the, the approach of the so-called stop and shop amendment in addressing, in addressing this small box convenience store type of proposal. And then also the, um, parking issue. Uh, once again, we have no problem with, uh, adopting the parking requirements of the regulations. Um, in the the staff comments, it was, uh, staff comment, number five, the one to 250 gross floor area parking, we don't have a problem with that. We had just adopted the same language that, uh, that the stop and shop amendment in the CCD two, uh, exception to the 1,500 foot prohibition. Um, and once again, number four, um, we have no problem with adding or as further restricted by, by the state or. So we, we, we have no problem, um, adopting any of the suggestions of the, of the staff. Um, and I'm free to, uh, answer any, any questions. I think we talked about it at, at length, I'm trying to keep this as short as possible. I know the commission had a link, lengthy meeting on March 18th and we're trying to cut to the chase on, and make this meeting a little bit shorter as well.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Attorney Sullivan. Um, do we have any questions, um, from our commissioners?
This is Commissioner Millard.
Uh, yes, go ahead.
I know at the last meeting, there was a lot of discussion about the, I, I, I'll move away from the term gas station, but the fueling station of the future. And there was a lot of conversations about EVs and so forth. And I think kind of the vision was that we need to provide the next generation fueling station and, and so that we're going to accommodate some of those EVs along the way. And I guess to that degree, should this amendment have some language in there that tries to accommodate EV charging stations? If that's what we're really trying to accomplish here. Because the thought was like, if I remember correctly, and, and I actually kind of backed off the 3,500 a little bit, more in concert with the 5,000, as I thought more and more about EV charging stations and, and doing a little bit of research in, in order to make an EV charging station in a gas station setting effective, you really need to go to a level three EV charging station, which, you know, a, a, a minimum amount of charging time to get just like 100 miles of capacity is 30 minutes. And it's more like an hour if you want to go top up to 80%. So if, if these are going to be the, the wave of the future, you need to have something for these people to do during that 30 minutes or that hour, which is, you know, get a meal or, you know, have a cup of coffee, uh, have some Y supply access so you could do some work. So if we're really trying to put something in place for the future, should those types of things be part of this provision here? If we're, we're going to try to create this next generation of fueling stations? Now, the, the other thing that also comes into play a little bit with regard to that is, is this world going to be topsy-turvy over the next two years or whatever? You see the, that President Biden's infrastructure plan, um, has provisions for creating 500,000 EV charging stations in the United States. And what does that do to the landscape of, of what we really need on the Berlin turnpike in Berlin? So that's kind of that crossed. It's a little bit of a disconnect with, with what we might be trying to accomplish here. It's not necessarily in concert where, what his vision might be. So are we a little bit ahead of the game? That's just a question I have in the back of my mind. So thoughts?
No, thank you, any other commissioners?
Commissioner Zarabozo, yeah, yeah, Commissioner Millard, you, you really do bring up some great points. Um, I think being, uh, I think this applies to this, we should consider this as, as is for the gas station, uh, proposal on the 1,500 feet and so on and so forth. Because in reality, I mean, much of this change to EV may not even happen in the next five years in, in, in the, in the context of what, you know, you and I are discussing. Um, I, I think you're probably going to see combinations of, you know, EV station, the charging ports at these gas stations. But I, I think moving forward with this proposal as opposed to restrict, to not would, uh, give the town, um, in that, uh, that general area um, a bit more flexibility to adapt to what may or may not come as, as you alluded to, um, you know, with, uh, political, um, and economic issues and so on and so forth.
Thank you, any other commissioners? So let me ask you something. With this proposal, then does the, um, the refueling station, the priority is the EV and not the gasoline then?
It would be a combination of, it would be a combination of the two. I'm sorry, I'm getting some feedback, I apologize.
That's all right, I'm going to have to mute.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm going to mute myself so that I can hear you and you won't get feedback. I'll do that now, thank you.
Uh, and addressing what Commissioners Zarabozo and Commissioner Millard said, um, uh, it's evolving. And, uh, what that, what the percentage combination is going to be, it, it will probably be a larger percentage of gas fueling, um, immediately as it transitions to a larger percentage of EV charging stations over the next few years. Um, it, it's hard to say what, what that time period is going to be. Um, but I think, um, it was an appropriate comment that, uh, the, uh, the charging of electric vehicles requires a larger supporting, uh, convenience store. And I use the word C store, convenience store, um, in a broad sense as it has evolved and as it continues to evolve with, uh, um, you know, food, uh, and, and all kinds of different amenities, um, which, which will allow customers to, you know, do something with that 30 minutes to, to an hour of time. Um, but that's, but that's going to continue to evolve. Uh, it, it, it's an organic issue at this point. But I think this puts, uh, the town of Berlin ahead of the curve. And, um, being able to adapt to, to the future at, at, at a greater pace than, than others will be by, by, um, recognizing that the changes are imminent and possibly quicker than people think.
Thank you, is there any other comments from the commissioners? And then we'll turn to the public and see if there's anything there. Nothing from the commissioners, so, uh, we are in the public hearing. So is there anyone who wishes to address the commission regarding this proposal? Right? And so we'll go back.
Madam Trump?
Yes.
Joe Bajorzki, Eighty Butter Nut Lane, I'd like to speak in favor of the proposal as amended.
Okay.
Um, and with the rapid advances in EV technology and the different fueling systems out there for vehicles, I think this is the timely proposal and I encourage the commission to adopt it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bajorzki. Anyone else from the public? Else from the commission, thoughts?
Gentlemen, this is Commissioner Miller again. Uh, uh, again, I'll just kind of like reiterate a little bit. I, I understand what Mr. Bajorzki said and, and I agree with his concept, but the language here does nothing necessarily to further that, that mission or, or objective. Um, we changed these wording here and the only thing that can happen by what we've allowed is for a 3,500 square foot 10 pump gas station with a Dunkin' Donuts to go in. And that's all that has to be done. Nothing at all has to be done with, for the future of EV or anything like that. So we just need to be aware that that's what this language says, as is, as it is.
Okay. That's a very valid point. Any other commissioners, have some thoughts on it?
Um, so what, Commissioner Zarabozo, so under current zoning laws, are there any restrictions on opening EV charging ports or what have you? What would, what would prevent someone from establishing a 10 port EV station in the town of Berlin?
Okay, I would ask Maureen if she has that information, but she, is that something that you would have, uh, off the top of your head or somewhere in the papers?
This is Maureen, so the, as the language doesn't specifically, has not specifically evolved, um, to accommodate that new, um, type of use, the, or type of facility. Um, if an applicant came in to propose that, came and talked to staff, um, in real time, we would advise them to come in with a text amendment that probably, um, without having studied that, um, probably something to just include that with gasoline filling stations. Um, I wish I could remember the term, um, that Commissioner Miller used a couple of minutes ago that is, you know, fueling stations rather than, um, or something that he used a term that was comprehensive.
They're EV charging stations.
Well, the EV charging stations, but also gasoline stations. So it would be a matter of, you know, you're, you're, you're regenerating your car regardless of what.
Right.
They proposed some language that had the same, you know, met, that they could be in the same places. Um, and if it was a proposal where an applicant was insistent that it fell within the regulations, we, we bring it to the commission for discussion as to whether or not the interpretation until the time the, um, um, regulation was changed was broad enough to include EV in order to regenerate a vehicle to drive further down the road.
Sure. Um.
So it would be A or B and.
Yeah, so to address, uh, Mr. Millard's point, which is a valid, very valid one, uh, you know, can this proposed amendment, uh, text amendment be amended to reflect that this would apply to, you know, fuel refueling, you know, stations versus just purely gas stations? Or is this something, you know, we're purely locked into just for gas fueling?
So, so Peter, I listen, I hear what you're saying, go ahead.
I'm sorry, George, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, can we, I, I, I get where George is coming from on this, but wouldn't we want to make it broader so that we're not actually dictating to the person who's making the investment in the C station, whether he has gas or EV? And the counter that would be, if you're really looking to serve the public, you're probably going to do both. So do we really need to nail it down that specifically? And that's really more geared to Maureen than anything.
Um, again, again, I'll reiterate, that would be the point at which I would, um, bring the item in and say to the commission or, you know, perhaps during this discussion, that's exactly what you're doing. Or rather during your deliberation on this, um, application, you would be doing is, um, including that interpretation, um, that it's fueling. Gasoline means fueling, but I would also, um, recommend that before the, the commission, um, adopt amendments to the proposed language or, or tweak the proposed language that the applicant weigh in on their comfort level with the, um, degree of changes, um, due to appealability of any decision. So I would want that to be within their, um, um, they, they'd be allowed to weigh in on whether they felt that was within the comfort level of appealability and defendability.
This is Commissioner Zigmont.
Yes, Tim.
If it says fueling, and that's the wording, fueling. If it's diesel fueling, gasoline fueling, electrical fueling, whatever the, the, uh, source of fuel is, it, 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 you know, just don't use the word gasoline station, use fueling station. And that will take over anything that you put in the car to make the car go or the vehicle move. Electricity of diesel, electric, I mean, uh, gas, whatever it is.
Yeah.
I would agree with the question that, uh, we would have no, we would have no objection to a, and to further amend the proposal, um, to call it the, uh, gasoline and electric fueling stations. And then in the BT one zone, only gasoline and electric fueling stations. Uh, I would have no problem with that, that is the intent. And, uh, I don't think you're going to, I know you're not going to see, um, what's, what's become the standard in terms of a, um, um, you know, convenience store, when they walk up, uh, Dunkin' Donuts or any other type of, whether it be, uh, um, you know, Baskin Robbins. Uh, and as you can see on some of the exhibits that I, that I submitted, uh, at the last presentation, um, this is, this is going to be, uh, a kitchen. I mean, it's, this is where the convenience store is going in the direction of, you know, fresh food, kitchen and other amenities with, uh, seating areas inside, um, and not just walk up and take out.
So this is Commissioner Millard again. Tim, I guess, would it be acceptable wording if you changed the words in the new section from gasoline filling stations to vehicle fueling stations? So it's more generic because you may have So it's more generic because you may have, you could use natural gas, there may be hydrogen fueling stations come along, EV charging stations and gasoline fueling stations.
I would agree wholeheartedly with that, Commissioner. I think that's I think that's appropriate to call it vehicle fueling stations because you're right. It could be some sort of hybrid vehicle, could be natural gas. People don't know in what direction and the pace of this change that that's that's happening. And I would agree with you a hundred percent that it should be called a vehicle fueling station. And any reference to gasoline filling station should be replaced with a vehicle fueling station.
Okay, thanks.
So it looks like we have to do a little, I'm hearing that we need to do just a little bit of tweaking on this document to to move it along.
I I agree. I would just say anywhere where it's referenced gasoline filling stations that it be revised to say vehicle fueling stations. And I think that would take care of that issue.
Any other comments from the commissioners? Or the public?
I think that will cover everything being generic that way of fueling, a vehicle fueling station. Because there is so many different sources of fuel out there or that potential field out there too.
All right. So we're okay. Well, we're still in the public hearing on this one, so do we have any other commissioner comments or questions or motion? Go ahead.
I just asked that that we clarify. I know we would we would amend it for to say vehicle fueling stations in lieu of gas filling stations. But I would just want clarification. We could live with thirty-five-hundred square feet or five thousand square feet. The building that's going to be constructed is going to exceed five thousand square feet, I can tell you that. But we could live with either whatever parameters the commission wants to set.
I I think I think it should go with five thousand, how do I think of it? Because most of the things I see down south right now is basically more than one kiosk type food systems. Starbucks, Gino, Papa Gino's, whatever, all the way through the the things and with seating in the middle. Could be a little grocery store too. But they're like kiosk type us venues inside the building. So if you do that type of thing, you're going to need a little more square footage.
If you if you if you listen to some of the scientific experts, the we're we're in the era of the pandemic. This is this is just the the first of what's probably going to be a continuing and evolving pandemic where where spacing is going to be very, very important, whether it be in the office or in stores. And the more space, the the safer the environment. And in in conjunction with the plan of conservation and development, it's encouraging of cachet and a a investment in in structures on the turnpike. And the larger the structure, the the more apt the developer is going to be to invest larger sums of money in that structure.
So commissioners, what do we want to is five thousand versus fifteen hundred? Oh, geez. All right. Any other thoughts on this commission?
This is Commissioner Miller. I think Tim makes a lot of sense. I think both times make a lot of sense. I think five thousand is good, you know, go big or go home type of deal, you know?
Commissioner Ogun, I would agree with the five thousand as well. I think that it would definitely push the project or any fueling station such as this towards being more than just that Dunkin' Donuts in a gas station.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Brian. All right. So what's the pleasure of the commission? We're still in public hearing?
All right, this is Commissioner Miller. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
For Bozo, I'll second it.
All righty. So we have the motion by Mr. Miller and the second by Mr. Robozzo.
May I say something before we do this?
Sure.
As one of the public people? Peter Diaddio? Before you close the public hearing, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, so we have the second for discussion, for further discussion. Yes, go ahead.
So I'm sorry, but I'm looking at the screen here of this proposition. And my gas station is on the bottom paragraph. There is one pending application for gasoline station on the Berlin Turnpike, BT two thousand eight, mixed use. I just noticed at this minute, proposed a revision of fifteen hundred square foot separation, which I have. A forty-three-hundred square foot building, thousands drive-through, thirty-three-hundred retail building. And I'm concerned that you're going to vote to make my building that's proposed all of a sudden not comply because you just, if I hear it right, you're changing it to be a requirement of five thousand square feet. Am I mistaken?
If I could, if I could address that, Mr. Diaddio, it would not apply to your your property because this is specifically limited to the BT one zone.
Well, correct, but I'm in the BT one zone if I right now. If they allow the zone change to BTD, then it doesn't apply. But I mean, I, you got my project right on your application here, so I think we need to, it needs to be discussed. Currently, I have a BT one though.
So this is Commissioner Miller. The way that I read it was that the fifteen hundred foot separation would still come into play if you were smaller than five thousand square feet.
This is Maureen speaking. If I may clarify for the record as well. Commissioner Miller is correct. This regulation is for a specific type of currently relabeled as a vehicle fueling station that fits within this parameter. The regular existing text for gasoline filling stations does not, is not being altered. The text that's in the the language that's in the regulations now that you created your proposal under is not.
Right, but what it sounds like to me, all of a sudden, now that I'm opening my eyes, is that so for every other gas station, you have to be fifteen hundred square feet apart. But if you build a five thousand square foot gas station, you could be right next to the gas station that I just built. Right? So all of a sudden, now you're, it's not a loving, a level playing field. You're saying only for five thousand square foot gas stations, you can go anywhere. But for ones under five thousand square feet, you got to be fifteen hundred feet apart. So now all of a sudden, it sounds like it's a discrimination. And my little tenant down here, that's just waited five years to build his gas station. All of a sudden, now it's got a five thousand square foot, not a, not a competing station, but the as big as you can, you can't be less than five thousand feet. So I think that you're going to need to rethink the the language. I'm not trying to say you can't make a text amendment, but what your text amendment now has become unfair because it's limited, it doesn't affect everybody. It only affects people that want to compete and try to put the small guy out of business. And by the way, my building is not that small. It's forty-three hundred feet. But I can't, I can't be closer. Not that I want to be closer because I am where I am, but let me say this, I'm just fifteen hundred feet. My gas station is where it is because it's fifteen hundred square feet away from the corner. This guy's land, he's working on his right next door. So he wants to put in a big store right next to my small guy. And if it wasn't if it wasn't this limiting factor, it was for everybody, I wouldn't have even spoke up. But all of a sudden, now I'm I'm hearing the way the meeting is going and it's going to, it's going to allow only over five thousand square foot stores to be able to go next to a small store, which does not appear to be a fair level zone modification.
Yeah.
The size of existing stores is irrelevant. It's just in the BT one zone that this vehicle fueling station would apply and not towards gas filling stations in any, in any, in any manner whatsoever.
Well, right, but you know, but you know where the BT one zone is. I mean, it's all up and down the Berlin Turnpike.
Yeah. Mr. Daddy makes a valid point. And thank you for your input on that.
I mean, there you got my whole paragraph of my store right underneath it. How can I miss it? Lucky I stayed.
Yeah, no, it it well, you know, the the thing of it is is that we can't control what comes into the commission. What we can do is take a, take a look at it, you know? And as is proposed, review it and then decide whether or not we want to work with it or reframe it or or whatever.
Sure.
You do make a very valid point. No, I you make a valid point and it's so now Maureen.
So Joan, this is Commissioner Miller again. I raised this point last meeting. I brought up as the example the guy across the street and was kind of pretty much shot down saying it wasn't our purview to stifle competition in that manner. Because I said, doing this to the sky where he made this investment, just rebuilt his gas station. Now we want to put one right across the street from him. And I was kind of shot down in terms of that that wasn't a valid argument. So is it a valid argument or it's not a valid argument? I I kind of thought it was.
There's, there's nothing in the statute that allows the commission to be anti-competitive. And in in that situation, first of all, Sam's, which the one the commission is referring to is not in a BT one zone. And actually, at this point, nor is Mr. nor is nor is Mr. Daddy's property. It's actually within fifteen hundred feet of the of the Sam's store on the corner. And only comes, it only gets out of fifteen hundred foot separation by a zone change. Rather, rather by the rezoning of the parcel outside of it. Right now, the actual parcel sits within the fifteen hundred foot zone. Which which is it's 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 an entirely anti-competitive provision in the in the statute. And it's not shared by by the anybody else on the turnpike and really anybody else in the state in my research. There are areas where filling stations are not permitted, but it's generally in the downtown area, not not on a turnpike. You want, you want a lot of like uses that are going to generate traffic towards an area. This is, this is a a tremendous economic opportunity for the town of Berlin to get ahead of the curve and start developing fueling stations and convenience stores in the next generation. This would not affect Mr. Daddy's property at all.
Well, I I think, I mean, both Mr. Daddy and Mr. Miller make very good points or excellent points. And, you know, the whole thing about, you know, the competition or whatever. Yeah, competition is healthy. I understand that part of it. But there was a restriction that was placed in years ago because of what you you just said, Tim. Is that you could have the whole Berlin Turnpike be loaded with gas stations or fueling stations or whatever we want to call it, stations. And we have to, as commission, decide whether or not the language that's being proposed, does it, does it fit with what we're looking for in in the future? Does it fit into our, the the plan of conservation and development? Does it bring greater traffic? Does it bring new businesses? Does it bring great ideas to the town?
Yes, I don't think, yeah, I I agree, and I don't think you'll see fueling stations on every corner up and down the the turnpike. There is, the market will decide where where the fueling stations will go. In this situation, this proposal, it's just in the BT one zone. And it's got, you have to have a minimum of two acre site to, for this, for this statute, for this regulation to take effect. Mr. Daddy spoke about the reference to his application in the staff comments. The reference to his, his gas station in in the staff comments has nothing to do with fifteen hundred feet. It really has to do with the size of his convenience store, which right now really isn't permitted. There is a nexus drawn in the regulations with the, in in the Berlin regulations that says that the structure that supports and monitors the the gas filling pumps cannot exceed two thousand square feet. And and that's what the issue raised in the staff comments addresses. Because the proposal, Mr. Daddy's proposal proposes a filling, a a structure that exceeds the limitation in the regulations as it's written right now. Because that that structure will in fact support the gas filling pumps. And that's, and that's what, when when Maureen drew up the the staff comments, that's what she was addressing. And that's why she was referencing his application in the, in the staff comments. Has nothing to do with fifteen hundred feet. Has to do with the size of the structure and whether that's permitted in the regulations. Which if it supports the gas filling pumps, it is, it does not.
Well, that's what you need to modify.
And that's what we're trying to modify.
Okay, I I just want to make sure that we have our records straight here. That was Peter Diaddio that just spoke. And Mr.
Peter Diaddio said that's what you want to modify. I'm sorry.
That that's okay. That's okay. I just want to make sure our transcript will be fine. Maureen, I think, is has her hand up here.
I I have, this is Maureen speaking. I have two concerns before getting lost in, they get lost in the weeds. The first being, this is a text amendment without specific site proposed simultaneously with it, correct, Mr. Sullivan?
It's a text proposal that's limited to the BT one zone, yes.
Then I want to, right, so not site specific. However, so I want to clarify what the zones are that were just referred to for a couple of different sites that everyone was speaking to. So, and this may be a typo as well, I'm not sure. But the southeast corner of Demming Road and the Berlin Turnpike, which is big and parcel that we typically refer to as the one the rug guy was always at, is the BT two zone. Across, directly across the street, there's a small triangular portion that's a gas station currently that was recently renovated and rebuilt. And that is the BT one zone. And then currently subject to rezoning to BTD and subject to a different application before this commission, Mr. Diaddio's. The properties on the west side of the Berlin Turnpike, south of Demming Road are BT one as well. So those are all, I I just want everybody to know that we're, we got muddy zones here right now. The other thing is that with regard to discussion of the store size and whatnot, under the current regulations, as they relate to Mr. Daddy's proposal, that public hearing was just closed. And I wouldn't want any compromise, discussion that may compromise that hearing to to a Compromised discussion that may compromise that hearing to, to occur. Um, his lawyer may have, may weigh in perhaps if the chairman.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, we're talking about a public hearing. We're talking about this guy's own change.
I, I just, I just want to make sure that when discussing, there, there was. Um, an item raised and it's in the record and it was raised and it is um. With regard to the size of the store or the, of the associated retail for the gas station and that other proposal as well. And that was part of that public hearing, but I want to make sure those discussions don't get muddied by any participants.
Thank you.
Right.
Yes, like, and just, just, just to clarify, this, this um, this proposal would not affect. Mr. Diaddio's proposal, because Mr. Diaddio's proposal is dependent on the rezoning of his parcel to a BTD zone. So um, his parcel will not be a BT one zone um, if it's approved.
All right, um, any other commissioners looking to weigh in?
Um. Can I make one more question? I may have gotten lost in there and it was a question to make sure that there were no further typographical errors in. Um, Mr. Attorney Sullivan's proposal. Um, with regard to the zoning. The zoning designations, because that property on the southeast corner is BT two.
Just, just to clarify, it would, it would be our intention to bring a sequential application. Very similar to Mr. Diaddio's sequential application. Uh, where we would um, seek to rezone from a BT two to a BT one. Um, and come with our site specific proposal at the same time. Uh, we weren't going to go through with the, the engineering expense of that unless the text change is, is implemented. But in, in no case would it affect Mr. Diaddio's proposal. Because his proposal is wholly dependent on his property being rezoned to a BTD zone. And this only affects BT one zones.
All right, so. All right, so with the BT. I'm trying, I'm trying to think of my questions here. Uh, this is very convoluted. It just seems, I, I don't know. It, it just seems.
Uh, this commissioner. This Commissioner Sigma.
Yes.
Uh, the, the question was coming up about the, basically the size of the building, thirty-five hundred to five thousand square foot. Uh. And the size of the building doesn't matter because of the. Functions that you want to do inside this C store, whatever. Uh. Then I don't know why we couldn't say. Uh, a minimum thirty-five hundred square foot and a maximum of five thousand square foot. Uh, in the proposal, uh, giving a leadway to the whoever applicants on that, any BT one zone. Uh, of the size of the building. It gives you a little leadway if you just put the, you know, minimum size and a maximum size uh, onto the. Of both.
So this is Commissioner, Commissioner Miller. Tim, I don't think the issue is the size of the building. The issue is the fifteen hundred foot. Space between gas stations. Mr. Diaddio's issue is he goes and puts his forty-three hundred square foot. Gas station in, makes the investment in it, and irrespective, he's a BT one now, even if he's, go, gets the new zoning. The adjacent property is BT one. So somebody can come five hundred feet down the road and build a five hundred square foot gas station right next to him. Where he was trying to comply with the rule as it is, with an understanding that nobody would be able to build within fifteen hundred feet of him. So I think that's the issue on the table that we're really talking about, not the thirty-five hundred versus five thousand or whatever.
God do respect, God do respect. The, the, as I stated in the last public hearing, the government is not in the business of choosing winners and losers. Or protecting a business enterprise. There's no authority in the statutes to add restrictions or barriers to deliberately be anti-competitive. Um, the fifteen hundred foot restriction is just an anti-competitive restriction. Um, and in fact, in this situation, I think there'd be winner, both, both proposals would be, be a win-win situation.
Um, Commissioner Zerbozo, um, to kind of address Commissioner Miller's point. Um, and, and Mr. Sullivan's, yeah, we're not, we, it's really not within our purview and. Nothing is guaranteed in life. We, we, you know, zoning variances can granted, zoning areas can change. When someone builds something in town, there isn't a guarantee that. Something in proximity of their property is ever not going to change. We can't. You know, as a, as a public zoning commission, sit here and try to say, well, you know, I, I don't think it's fair because he, this person might lose business. Because we're going to move, you know, change his zone. I mean, we, we need to be thinking about this. Holistically in the entire BT one zone, you know, irregardless of wh- wh- whomever or whatever may, you know. Uh, businesses may be there. Um, and, and to this point, I, 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 you know, I. I would suggest continuing this because I think we've gone into the weeds. And I, we've had so many, you know, uh, aspects and considerations that I don't know if we can actually come to an adequate. Understanding and make an informed decision on this matter at this point.
Hmm, okay, uh, we did, I, I believe that we had a motion to um. Did you have a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes.
All right, so we would actually need a withdrawal of the motion. And the second in order to continue the public hearing. And so the folks.
I'll make a motion to withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you. And do we have a withdrawal on the second?
I'll, I'll withdraw.
Okay, terrific. And so let's move, let's. I mean, there's a lot for us to think about. I mean, we have the plan of conservation and development coming down the pike. We have interesting points that were brought up by the commissioners and by the applicant themselves. And I think what we need to do is sort of step back for a minute and just. And just look at this and, and look at the language and then see if there's anything that we can work out. But I, I think it, um, I, I think it's a good idea to continue. So do we have a motion to continue?
If I could be heard, um.
Yes.
We're at, we're at the, I, I believe we might be at the limit with the, it has to be closed without an extension. And if it's the prerogative of the commission to continue the public hearing. Um, there would need to be, I believe, an extension of the uh, of the time limit to close the public hearing.
Okay, let me just check to see when we open the public hearing. Okay, we opened it uh, March eighteenth. So, yeah, and don't we have sixteen?
No, we, there, so there is thirty-five days to close the public hearing by standard state statute. Um, I've got to say, I didn't, um, last meeting, I made sure I counted and knew all the available extensions and. This week, or actually since I returned from vacation has been um, a little hectic. And I'm not really sure where the executive orders stand at this time. You may, they. I thought they were still in place for an additional ninety days. That's also available, but there's also sixty-five days of extension time to use to. Um, continue the public hearing. Um, generally that sixty-five days is with the um. Consent of the applicant and then, but ninety days permitted by executive order. And perhaps I know Chris is on the line and, or Attorney Sullivan is more up to speed on if anything changed in the last few days. With regard to those executive orders being extended for the ninety days that either um, the applicant or the commission can utilize.
All right.
Any changes? Any changes that would have taken place to the executive orders would be effective on April nineteenth. Uh, the executive orders remain in, the COVID executive orders remain in place through April nineteenth. So uh, Maureen is correct that uh, this commission has ninety days of uh, extensions in its back pocket. That it could impose um, an extension at this time through the, the next uh, meeting, which would be, I believe, May sixth, I think. Um, I'm not, I could be wrong about that. It may, early May. Um, but uh, and certainly that, I would, I would have, you know, they could just impose it. Um, I know a, as of, as of Monday, the uh, this, the, the state senate and. The House of Representatives both approved an extension of the uh, of the COVID-related executive orders. Through May, I believe twenty-first or twenty-second, I think it's May twenty-second. But to my knowledge, that has not been signed as of yet by the governor. It's expected to be signed by the governor, but has not been. I don't believe it's been signed as of yet, expected in the next couple of days to be signed. But in any event, uh, the commission has um, ninety days as we speak. Um, so they could, so the commission could certainly impose an extension through their, their May and. I forget what, give you the exact date in a second.
Well, the next meeting is May sixth, right?
Sixth, I believe, yeah, I was just checking. May sixth, yes. So this, so the commission could impose an extension through May sixth.
I'll make a motion to extend to May sixth.
Backing up. Zerbozo.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion to uh, to continue to May sixth. We have a second by Mr. Zerbozo. And uh, any further discussion from the commissions? And I think Chris Edge, you came online, but I didn't know. Did you want to speak at all?
I, I can, but if, if, if they're voting to continue, I guess I can just wait until May sixth. It's up to.
Okay, terrific. All right, so um, all those in favor of continuing to May sixth? Can we have an eye? Eye?
Uh, eye.
Is there anyone opposed? Any commissioners opposed?
Can I, can I do a roll call on that one?
Uh, sure.
I think, I think we, um, we, when we have decision type things, I'd like to make a roll call. Um, of this source, although I think I lost two on the total. Okay, so we have George Millard.
Aye.
Um. Tim Zigmatt.
Aye.
Peter, Brian Rogan.
Aye.
Joan Beely.
Aye.
Steve Wollman.
Aye.
Peter Zerbozo.
Aye.
And I believe that's. Steve Biella. Steve Biella Junior.
Aye.
Thank you. I'm sorry I lost the alternates that were seated. I.
I know, I know, just shuffle them around. Okay, thank you guys. Um, all right, so and then the next uh, item is the proposed amendment to the Berlin regulations for. Tim Sullivan, a squire for the new section, uh, eleven double D, planned residential infill development. Is that correct? Infill. Okay? All right, Tim, you're still with us?
Good evening again.
Yeah, good evening, good evening. And what do you have on this? Just a continuation.
No, this is no.
No, okay.
Uh, point, uh, point of order. Does the chairperson want to resee Andrew Legnani? As I was a temporary seat for the last um, matter.
Okay, hold on. Uh, yes, we're going to resee uh, Mr. Legnani for Peter Zerbozo. I'll ask Peter to step down. Uh, for this item. Okay, thank you. You should confirm Andrew's on the line. And. This, okay, Peter's on the line, Andrew's on the line, okay. And Steve Biella is still here. Okay, great. All right, um, so uh, Mr. Sullivan, what do you have for us here?
Yes, thank you. Good evening again. I'm getting a lot of feedback going for some reasons.
All right, that's us. I'm going to mute.
Thank you. Uh, good evening again, Attorney Timothy Sullivan of the law firm Wasnawski and Sullivan. The law firm has been hired by a local developer in regard to the redevelopment of old motel properties on the Berlin Turnpike. Uh, the proposal was for a new section in the special regulations. Uh, section eleven DD, which we've coined as the Planned Residential Infill Development, PRID, P-R-I-D. The proposed new section would, by special permit, allow the conversion of existing motel properties. Limited to motels on a single lot having total acreage of not less than point five acres. And not more than three acres with frontage on the Berlin Turnpike. Um, I'd ask to display the map and the property list, which this proposal would affect. And. Develop. A property list. Uh, I believe James, Jim Mahoney and Chris Edge and team have uh, worked on this map. And there's an accompanying property list with that map, which is identical to the property list that I've developed. Um, the property list, uh, it's, it's for thirteen current old, we call them the old motels. You know, the Mount Royal, Johnson's, Berlin Motor Inn, Little Village, Dalen Motor Inn. These are the motels that um, are referenced in the uh. In the plan of conservation and development, um, I believe as old and, and tired, um, considered. It, it, it planned development refers to them as, it's, as the Berlin Turnpike as an icon of the automobile age. With people outside the community still consider anonymous, synonymous with tiny motels. And in this situation, these are the tiny motels that, that it's referring to. Uh, these motels were built between the time, timeframe of nineteen ten. Um, a couple, one of them was in nineteen twenty. Nineteen ten was the Berlin Motor Inn. Nineteen twenty was the Relax Inn, uh, nineteen thirty, the Value Inn, Peterson's Motel. Um, it was also an efficiency motel um, in nineteen twenty and, and some of them were built in the nineteen fifties as well. Uh. Some of them are up against residential properties. Um, the proposed new section. Uh, these, these motels are all located mostly within a BT one zone. Some of them um, are in the uh, P O, one of them is in the P O R zone. Uh, one of them's in the S P D D zone and two of them are in the C C D one zone. Specifically excluded from the proposal would be the Days Inn, which is the former Hawthorne. At twenty-three eighty-seven Berlin Turnpike and the Best Western at twenty-two fifty-three Berlin Turnpike. And these are specifically excluded because they contain, they, they're, they are situated on parcels. Which are greater than three acres in size. And the proposal specifically states that the intent of this section is to provide an economic incentive. For the redevelopment of existing motel properties, which are considered inefficient and underperforming by contemporary land use standards. Uh, it is not intended to facilitate the conversion of non-residential uses. Um, as qualifying standards under section two A. It states the track shall consist of a single lot under one ownership or control in existence prior to the effective date of this regulation. With its current use of a motel having a total area of not less than one half acre and not more than three acres. And shall be served by public water and sanitary sewer. So that specifically excludes what would be considered the, the more modern hotels on the turnpike. Um, the uh, uh. As previously stated, the process for converting a motel, a motel to a planned residential infill development. Is by special permit and to review section two C of the regulation. Proposed regulation, I don't know if you want to put the proposed regulation up on the, on the screen as well. Um, I was referring to it uh, previously. There we go. If I can make it a little larger, it's. If you can make it a little larger, it's, so there we go, yeah. So I was reading originally from, with a qualifying standards 2A, which has the .5 acre to three acre parameter. And paragraph, sub-paragraph B states it must front on a, on State Highway 515 or the Berlin Turnpike. The procedure under C, which I just referenced, it calls for an application for special permit. And in addition to the requirements of Section 12 of the special permit regulations, the applicant would be required to submit a stormwater management plan prepared by a professional engineer. This is a little duplicative because this would be required under site plan. And under a special permit application, a site, a site plan application is also required. But the applicant would also be required to submit a written traffic statement addressing prospective traffic of the proposed development. Certainly, under the site plan requirements, or under the, under the special permit requirements, if the, if the commission saw fit, if the commission believed that this was a high-traffic generator, then it could require a full-blown traffic study. But as a, as a condition of the, well, part of the submission under this application would be a written traffic statement. And the commission could rely on that written traffic statement, or it could determine that a full-blown traffic study was warranted. Also, the location, orientation, design, scale, landscaping, everything consistent with the characteristics of the town and the neighborhoods would need to be, would need to be addressed. This, this would actually protect the surrounding residential neighborhoods because it would be permanent housing that replaces short-term housing. And that in itself would affect, would, would afford better protection of a budding residential neighborhoods. The proposed density for a proposed residential infill development is 10 units per acre. And that can be found in Section 3A. And that would be sort of a hybrid model between the BTD 2, 4 acre, four unit per acre require, requirement, and Section 8F3, the Kennington Overlay Zone, Village Core Area 1, which is 26 units per acre. So this, this would allow 10 units on an acre. The proposed text changes are supported by the Plan of Conservation and Development. The Plan of Conservation and Development talks about recognizing, it recognizes that the residential developments that have been completed are set well back from the travel lanes, but also emphasizes the need to alter the perception and image of the turnpike and create, create a sense of place, which this would be doing because it would be bringing these motel units, which are outdated and badly in need of updating. And they sit right on the turnpike. And so that would, that would, the, the, the perception and image of the turnpike would be enhanced. The Plan of Conservation and Development also recognizes the opportunity, that opportunity should not be precluded by the rigidity, but instead favor flexibility and encourage infill development using existing infrastructure, rather than encouraging into greenfield areas. And then finally, it will continue residential development of the turnpike in a manner the POD described as increasing the cachet of the turnpike by, by bringing residential development right up to, to the street and not set back from the street quite a distance. In, in conclusion, this is, this is an opportunity for the town to stimulate investment in a way that would alter the perception of the turnpike, residential, residential development not set back from the travel lanes. The redevelopment would be driven by the BT Design Guidelines, which include, I got this here real quick. The BT2, the building design guidelines, you could bring these properties up to speed in terms of whether it be lighting and landscaping and things of this nature. The, just finally make reference, the Capital Region Council of Governments stated that the staff commends the efforts to convert hotel and motel spaces into permanent housing units, which furthers CRCOG's policy to encourage and support changes to zoning regulations to permit a greater diversity of housing types and costs. So I want, I'm available to address any, any questions to the commission. But I think this is, once again, is a, is a forward-looking proposal to address some of the tiny motels and the condition these tiny motels are in, and allow them to be developed into, into permanent housing. And like I said, I'll entertain any questions at this time.
Commissioner Rogan? I just wanted to make sure I heard you correctly. You said that they'd be following the BT1 zone guidelines that we recently passed a couple of years back. So are you saying that there'd be no residential within the first 300 feet of the turnpike, and that would be saved for a commercial?
No, no. This is, this is an infill development. This does not follow the BT1 guidelines. These, these hotels, these small hotels are built right up to the street in many cases. And.
Yes, that's why I asked, I was wondering, because I thought I heard you say that, but.
No, and so these, these hotels, these, these small tiny motels would be replaced by, by, by more modern, smaller residential units, less than 1,000 square feet in size.
Okay, thank you. All right, let me go, the, the hotels that you, the list of hotels that you forwarded to us, that we have. I'm just trying to see where the, sorry, the lighting is not that great in this room here. What are their, what is the acreage that's now involved in some of these hotels? I know.
Yes. Yeah, let me, let me go over that. We start off with the Mount Royal Hotel, which is at 2447 Berlin Turnpike. That's on 1.61 acres of property, and it has 191 feet of frontage. At 1906 Berlin Turnpike, it's, there's really no name to this hotel at this point. That's on .91 acres. 1867 Berlin Turnpike, which is the Johnson's Motel, that's on 1.91 acre. 1677 Berlin Turnpike, which is an efficiency motel, that's at the, the end of, the south end of the Worthington Ridge, next to the, I think everybody knows which hotel, which motel we're referring to, but it's next to the, there was a former coffee shop there. Right around, right nearby is the Home Healthcare Center. 1737 Berlin Turnpike is on, is the Berlin, excuse me?
Forest Motel?
It's, it's called efficiency. There's a couple, yeah, that's all it's called, is the efficiency. It's a bunch of, it's a bunch of standalone units. Right as you get to the end of the south end of the, of the Worthing, Worthington Ridge, and you go south on the turnpike, it's immediately on your right-hand side, on the western side of the room.
You mean across the street, you mean across the street from the fire department?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thanks, Tim.
It's, it's a bunch of standalone units. Then you got 1737 Berlin Turnpike, which is the Berlin Motor Inn, built in 1910 on 1.89 acres. You have 1401 Berlin Turnpike, which is Little Village on 1.17 acres. You have 1191 Berlin Turnpike, which is the Dalen Motor Lodge, which is on 1.89 acres. You have 829 Berlin Turnpike, which is the Relax Inn on 1.13 acres. You have 811 Berlin Turnpike, which is the Coronet Motel on .76 acres. You have the Twin Spruce at 697 Berlin Turnpike, which is one, on 1.2 acres. You have 354 Berlin Turnpike, which is the Comfort Motel, which is on .69 acres. You have the Value Inn at 176 Berlin Turnpike on 1.72 acres. And you have the Peterson Motel at 102 Berlin Turnpike on, at 1.49 acres. Those are 13 motel properties that are really the tiny motels referred to in the Plan of Conservation and Development, built between 1910 and 1930. Actually, 1959 is the last one.
Yeah. And the actual numbers of units that they have, okay, I think I just saw the column that you have here. Units. Maximum units, okay. Number of units, what's that? See, with the dark blue, it's hard for me to read.
Yeah, they range, they, they range from 18, yeah.
Yeah, those are the, okay, those are the number of units rounded, or founded, or what's that word?
I did not prepare that list. That, that list was prepared, I believe, by Jim Mahoney. And Chris Edge might have had a hand in it as well.
Joan, this is Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
The, the number of units rounded at 4,000 square feet per unit, that's how many they could have on the existing acreage. If you want to know how many units are in the motel, you have to go way over to the right, the sec, you know, there's a, there's a column underneath the motel that tells you the year it was born. The next column tells you how many units they have in the motel, 25, 13, 16, 12.
All right, okay, thank you.
The number of units rounded, you know, right next to the number of units rounded, that's just how many they'd be allowed to build on that many, that size lot, at 4,000 square foot per unit.
Okay, and there, and basically you're saying that this would be, a one acre would be required, but some of your parcels here, they're, are less than one acre.
No, half acre.
It ranges from one-half acre to three acres. And the reason we went to three acres is because there's a few properties, few motel properties, which are listed as 1.91, 1.95, 1.89. And those have not been surveyed probably in decades. And we didn't want to exclude them because the, because a survey would just put them just over two acres.
Well, now, in your proposal, are any of these units affordable?
By statute, no.
And they would be going to 10 units per acre?
Yes.
So this is Commissioner Miller, just a couple of questions, Tim. So these could either be somebody coming in, developing a rental property, or it could go condo, correct?
Yes, and in fact, we addressed that in the, in the regulation, where we, and that would be in Section.
I saw, about bylaws and stuff, association.
Yeah, an association would have to be established, yes.
Okay, you made a comment before that these would be less than 1,000 square feet. That's nowhere in where I read any about that. And, and it doesn't look, it doesn't look like there's a limitation that would make that so, especially if it's a multi-story building. All you say is you can't, they can't occupy more than 50% of the square footage.
Yes.
So you could still come up with 1,500 square foot units if you did a multi, multi-level apartment building or something.
I agree. The, the regulation, and we, we would, we would have met, I, I would, I would have met the regulation now. It should have stated on 3A that the size of the, it gives the number of units as 4,000 square feet. But it, we would agree to a limitation in 3A not to exceed 1,000 square feet. No unit could exceed 1,000 square feet. And.
Go ahead.
That would give the developer discretion, where he could build, you know, a, a two-bedroom at 1,000 square feet, and maybe a studio at 600 square feet, a one-bedroom at 800 square feet. But it would give him discretion by just having a cap of 1,000 square feet total per unit.
So is there also something here somewhere along the lines that this is kind of a tear them down to a greenfield and build new versus, you know, take two, park, two motel units and cobble them together into an apartment, so they still look like ugly as sin on the outside, but meet this provision?
Well, that, that, that would be controlled by the special permit process.
Okay.
The, the, the commission would have a tremendous amount of discretion in here. And it talks about, you know, architectural drawings. It talks about, you know, that it has to be the location, orientation, design, scale, texture, materials. Everything would have to be consistent with the characteristics, characteristics of the town and neighborhood in which the proposed development is located.
Okay.
But I, I would, I would assume most of these would be, would be a teardown.
Okay. Do we know if any of these have been contacted and they actually have interest in doing this, or?
There are, there are, well, there would, nothing that would require them to do this, that's why.
No, I'm just asking, is, is there interest from these motel owners in doing something like this? Or is this a developer who sees an opportunity and is gonna then approach them if this gets passed?
My, my client, my, my client is presently in control of two properties where he intends to do this.
Okay. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Is there any other commissioners with questions? All right, we are in the public hearing. So is there anyone from the public?
Yes, please, Ms. Veely, it's Chris Edge.
All right. Hi, Chris, how you doing?
I am wonderful, thank you. I just want to express my appreciation for Attorney Sullivan bringing this forward. If the commission members remember, back in maybe October, November, I had come into the commission to discuss this as a concept, which had gotten us to today. Really, the goal was redevelopment, more productive, long-term use of the parcels. I had a couple items that I wanted to mention, one of which has already been mentioned, which is 1,000 square feet, because I know that was a big piece with this commission, for this to move forward. The second is, and I don't know how we put this in here, which is some level of investment. My concern is somebody comes in on a special permit and they, they hang a for rent sign. The intent is not that. The intent is to see investment, to see these turnover. Again, I don't know how that fits into language, but I want to make sure that this commission has the ability and the teeth that someone is doing an actual redevelopment. They're not putting a coat of paint on and moving something forward. The next thing is 2C. There was something, I believe, about the design, scale, texture. I think height needs to be in there and stated very specifically. Character is very much at the beholden and what the commission currently believes. I believe three stories was the max we allowed in the downtown area. You might consider doing that because we want to make sure it does fit into the character of not just the turnpike, but the town itself. Let's see here. Care of what I believe Chairwoman Veely had mentioned, which was the affordable piece. I just did a quick calculation. If it's gonna be 14 properties redeveloped at an average of 14 per property, so we'll call it 200 units or 196, that means if they're all affordable, we're 19 units the wrong way. We're currently at 9.6%. We are knocking on the door. And I'm not saying this commission needs to do anything, but the 20% affordable should at least be part of the discussion. If we are getting these units coming in, especially if, let's say, that the one that we're gonna be hearing on May 20th is all market, we, we've worked very hard as a community to get to that 10%. And I think it's at least a discussion that needs to be part of it. Maybe it's incentivized, much like we do with the BTD, but to keep that affordability piece. I think this is a great idea. I think it's tremendous because it can bring opportunity, again, if it's done properly, to redevelop these properties, give opportunities, and I can really see it being professionals' first job, even an empty nester who's single. So I, I love the idea. I just want to make sure that we're looking at the both short and long term of this. I do appreciate what Attorney Sullivan has brought in, and I am definitely in favor of doing it. And really hope we can move this forward in a way that works for everyone. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Any other questions?
This is Commissioner Ziegma.
Yes, go ahead, Tim.
Yes, this is the proposal, if I remember correctly.
Yes, uh, this is the proposal, if I remember correctly, in October, that was looking like, uh, a single-family, small, single-family homes, uh, under a thousand square foot, uh, uh, single-family units. Uh, and it could be for sale or, uh, rentals. Uh, that that was on, if I remembered a piece of property, it was probably, uh, uh, towards the Forest Motel across from the Berlin Turnpike. Uh, and I'm all in favor for single-family, uh, residential homes, uh, going into this, these parcels. You know, they'd be smaller little lots or association lots, community, uh, you know, that you could put together, uh, to make it of the pride of homeownership on, on these little houses. Instead of having these hotels, that people have lived in some of these hotels for twenty years with a little efficiency, uh, bedroom, efficiency, uh, kitchen. Uh, you know, and we're trying to get it into a single-family residential type situation. I think that's what the, the, the gist of this is, and, uh, Attorney Sullivan could go a little bit better on that.
Uh, it wouldn't limit it to homeownership. This could be rental properties as well.
But single-family residential type, type units?
A townhouse, for instance, a townhouse. Yeah.
But you put six townhouses together, now you're talking a big unit, a big building.
Well, it could be a fairly, a fairly good-sized building, um, with each unit not exceeding one thousand square feet.
So you're not, you're not talking individual, uh, homes? Small homes.
Limited to individual homes, no.
Many homes, whatever you want to call them.
It's not, it's not limited to individual, uh, homes, no. It could be, you know, uh, like, like I said, a, um, a, a townhouse type of development, but the individual units themselves would be limited to one thousand square feet.
I, I think it's an interesting proposal, and it certainly would breathe new life into, um, some sort of, um, you know, sort of, um, I want to use the word dreary. I mean, I, I don't mean to minimize peoples, but I mean, you have, um, you have some elements there on the Berlin Turnpike, and I think this would give people a chance to have, uh, basically rental space, I mean, or, or home space. Um, I think one thing we also have to be aware of is the height, because there, some of these locations do have homes around, and they are existing homes that are on the turnpike and well-cared-for and loved. And, um, so I think that we have to be careful when we talk about the height of the building. Uh, we don't want to diminish them or impact those folks either. So I, I, I think that, um, it's an interesting proposal. I mean, I, you know, I, I know the hour is getting very late for all of us, and we're trying to stay focused on it. Uh, but I, I do think that this one has some promise. Um, any other commissioner comments or for the public, anyone from the public wants to address this? Uh, yes, Commissioner Rogan, go ahead.
Yeah, I remember when this was brought before, some discussion, and as I was led to believe, it was gonna be more of like a little tiny home thing. And I mean, the great appeal of this is to try and improve the image of the turnpike by getting rid of the motels, um, or allowing them to be redeveloped, uh. But I don't know if residential is really the, the best way to go about that. I mean, I feel like our whole premise before with allowing the residential in the BT one zone was that it had a commercial aspect to it. Um, as that is a major commercial corridor for, you know, not even, I know a lot of your typical box stores are going under because of companies like Amazon, but there are a lot of little contractors and stuff popping up and little, you know, you're, you see things like the physical therapy and the medical. Um, and we are talking one, three-acre lots here, which could be very easily used by those businesses as well. Uh, I just don't know if this is the exact right direction that we want to be going with the town, uh, for our town with more and more residential on the turnpike, especially without any, as it's written right now, affordable aspects.
Yeah, that's, that's a valid point, but I'm not even sure if people who have these little hotels or motels right now would even have the inkling, um, to do something like this. They, it may just be that we're just offering them an option, but yeah.
Very true.
The affordability is something that we want to look at as well, I believe, because, um, we have worked really, really hard to get our numbers where they are. And we have some really good, uh, projects that are in the hopper.
Yes, and I, I really liked with the projects that we did allow recently, that we do have that commercial aspect. My other concern would be that, uh, you know, we're talking about a nice big developer coming in, wiping the slate clean and doing something nice. Uh, if we don't get that nice developer, I get that it's special permit, but what if all of a sudden these motels just turn into trailer parks and all of a sudden, what, where's the win in that?
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Vealy, if I could, or Chairman, Chairman Vealy, if I could just add one thing, um, on what, uh, Chris Edge, sorry. What Commissioner Rogan had mentioned, um, south of Route nine, where the number of these are, has been very challenging for development uh, in the BT one zone, which is our most open zone. South of Route nine right now is not an area that is seeing development sadly. Um, one of the reasons for this was to look at the motels in particular being probably one of the most, we'll call it problematic properties, if you talk to health and fire and police. Um, could be potential development, yes, but I know that there's also been some major concern about one thing you had mentioned, which is the contractors. We happen to have a couple folks that have, shall we say, not put a good taste into people's mouths. So I think it needs to be looked at in the grand scheme to say, okay, great. Do we see all them get redeveloped? Probably not. But there's incentive, and I do believe that a number of the families are older and could sell the properties. I know at least two or three are on the market right now, so I think it's definitely worth consideration to amazingly say, okay, great, we're gonna get contractors down there. I don't think that's realistic, because there's just, there's too many moving pieces on that one. Um, but again, definitely worth looking at, but I just wanted to mention those couple things on what I've seen. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other commissioners as well? And then, um, I think we're, we're still in the public hearing on this one too, right? Yes, okay. Anyone else? Anyone from the public who wishes to address the commission? And then I will look to Maureen to see if she has any comments.
Um, okay, so this is Maureen. I, um, do have some comments, although they're not well-developed. Um, as I'm sure, as with all the commissioners know, with the number of applications we have flying through us, there's plenty to do. Um, but, um, and many of the points I was going to make have been discussed and/or, um, are kind of general information. One of the things I wanted to point out was a little bit of a description of what the existing motel inventory looks like. Um, and I want to comment as well to thank Commissioner Miller for, um, explaining the chart that we had come up with and diverting to where the unit count was. I appreciate that. I was, um, waiting for a turn, and that was awesome. Um, the, but the motels along the Berlin Turnpike, um, now are generally not performing uses. I'm sorry, is somebody having trouble hearing us or something?
Yeah, it's, it's a chairman.
Okay, well, we're together, so I think it must be just background noise on our, on ours. And I'm sorry if, if that's happening, let me know, and I'll cut myself short. Um, that the motel uses are generally, as, um, Attorney Sullivan indicated, built from nineteen-ten to nineteen-fifty-nine. Um, they, there are, while there are, some of them also include just one full dwelling unit for motel management. Many of them do not have laundry facilities for the occupants' use. And they, and many are currently utilized as residential, um, accommodations for, um, I, on a permanent basis. Um, the, I got some of the data I've got, I've obtained from the Health District's casual conversations with regard to the clientele, and they may be, they are occupied as living quarters by individuals and families that have no permanent residence. Um, and that may include those who struggle, struggle securing permanent housing due to limited income credit, um, disabled, those struggling with abuse issues or mental health issues, as well as some of the motels are used for transient, um, in transient use. Um, they, they, the point being, they are fulfilling a housing, um, use now. Um, many of the identified motels, as represented, are deteriorating or in disrepair, and I believe several are also vacant. Um, Chris commented that they're on the market, um, and some of them are also on the market. Um, the, in kind of, the data I got included that the occupants are generally not section eight. And those typical rents are a thousand to twelve hundred dollars per month for those residences. So it's not that cheap to live in these deteriorating motels. Um, so there may be some opportunity to move on. The, um, Health District as well as the, um, while the Health District had no comment in conversation, um, rehabbing, re, redevelopment, um, would not be unsupported by them either. You know, their, it's, um, renovations and, 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 um, uplifting the community and housing choices, um, would, would fill a need as well. Um, the, um, we continue to work on an analysis, um, and a summary of the existing permitted multifamily densities. I had hoped to have a chart for you that said, you know, what, how this ten units per acre compares with the other multifamily choices that we have. Um, I know the hour is getting late. I don't want to dwell on a lot of little, um, not cohesive details. Um, and if the hearings kept open, we will have that opportunity to provide that. Um, and prior to the next meeting. Um, where, as you know, we've been gathering and have discussed at the last several meetings, some of the housing data and, um, the BT data along the Berlin Turnpike, be- because we've discussed concerns with densities and ability to incorporate affordable and the housing, um, choice that's desired in the P O C D throughout the town and want to make sure that the language does reflect what the town is striving for. Um, as far as, as Tim went through his regulation, um, proposal, um, I specifically noted number two C one, where he modified the, um, rather, where he's stating the numbers of applications and materials to be submitted. I would, um, recommend that that get adjusted to comply with the checklist. It's ever-evolving, depending on the number of people we have to route things to, um, to include the departments as well as the commission. So, um, I may want to ask for, I'm asking for a tweak of that language, and Tim and I can work on, on that wording. Uh, I think that covers most of it right now, because almost everything else was discussed by somebody else, um, this evening.
All right, any other commissioners? Public. So, what's your pleasure? I mean, we have, have some concerns, and I don't know if the language needs to be reworked. Or do we, um, we want to table this also? Hate to keep tabling things, but sometimes it gets very late, and, uh, we don't, I think we have a clear head, but I, I think, I would really like to see the affordability. It should be addressed with this, along with the height. I, I think that, uh, the, um, idea that you have, Mr. Solomon, uh, presentation is, um, is a pretty valid one. It would breathe new life, but, um, I think we have to see how it's gonna impact our housing stock. And, um, of course, we have the plan of conservation and development to think about as, as well. Um, anyone else have some thoughts on this? All right, so.
I, I agree, I I, I agree, Madam Chairperson, um, uh, these, these are all valid points. Uh, we will be, we will probably be, I'll be working with Maureen on, on some of the language that, that she would like to see. Uh, between now and the next, uh, meeting on May sixth, we hope to put together a revised proposal which addresses some of your concerns, if not all of your concerns. Um, and I hope we'll be able to move this forward at that time. But I agree that, you know, based on what I've heard, that the public hearing should remain open and give us a chance to address the concerns of the commission.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, Attorney Sullivan. So is there a motion to, um, continue the public hearing?
I'm gonna make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Thank you, Steve. And we have a second from Mr., who seconded? Mr. Rogan, I thank you, can't tell. It just says Colin. All right. So further discussion, and all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? All right, perfect, thank you. All right, on to the old business, and this should go fast. Um, we have the special permit application for William Watson III for the accessory dwelling, uh, unit one sixty-eight, uh, Blue Ridge Road. Uh, we heard from the applicant, and, uh, we saw a proposal for his mom. Um, and knowing that he has to recertify every year, um, and that it's not gonna be a rental property, it's just basically for family use. Do we have a motion on this at all, or a further discussion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to move the special permit for William Watson, substitute the fact that it's a relative-only, and it is renewed yearly.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Watson, and second.
I'll second that motion, Commissioner Rogan.
All right, we had the second by Mr. Rogan, but that's gonna be for discussion, um. I believe, uh, Steve, I think with the motion, um, you said it's for, I don't know if we can go specific to a relative, can we?
My, uh, this is. Well, my goal is to keep it out of creating an income unit, so how, whatever Maureen thinks the proper wording is, is, I will agree with.
Okay, all right. I had a feeling that's where you were going with it. It's just that I kind of stopped. She also did too. Um, she's looking quickly. Do you think we could just make this motion contingent on, um?
I'll revise the motion to make it contingent on Maureen adding in the proper wording.
Uh, okay, this is Maureen speaking. Can I make a clarification?
Sure.
The, um, provision in the zoning regulations for exact accessory dwelling units, um, that this was applied for under, which is eleven T, um, as far as occupancy goes, or one of the provisions of occupancy, it says, "The occupancy of the accessory dwelling unit shall not exceed two persons and shall be limited to persons at least fifty-five years of age. The age restriction shall be waived if the owner files a covenant on the land records with states the accessory unit shall not be rented at a cost which exceeds thirty percent of eighty percent of the area medium income." And in other words, that the unit is deed restricted as affordable, and I'm cut to the chase there without reading the whole provision. Um, and therefore, the regulation itself has parameters on the occupancy. I do not know that the commission has the, um, the latitude to further restrict beyond the regulation's allowance for it. So it is limited, it's just limited as an accessory dwelling unit. The units are not specifically, um, written, the regulation is not specifically written for the units to.
The regulation is not specifically written for the units to be compelled to be in-law units. Does that make sense, I'm sorry if I explain that.
Well, yeah, I think we're all a little slow, but I I think that makes sense, how about for you, uh, Mr. Wallman?
Yeah, what Maureen said.
In other words, got you there, Steve, then.
In in other words, in compliance with the regulation, occupancy to be in compliance with.
Maureen, I'll go with that.
Okay, Mr. Rogan, you're good with that too because you had the second.
I'll make my second.
So further discussion on this and all those in favor, I.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm sorry, that should do a roll call.
Well, why don't I ask if anyone's opposed?
All right, that's fine.
And you guys opposed, nobody's opposed, so we got that, okay, good. Uh let's move on, the zone change request for the V T two thousand eight L L C for the changing of the zone at four oh four Roman Turnpike. Um this is, I believe this is this isn't still tabled, right?
No, this isn't tabled.
No. This isn't tabled.
Sorry, whoa, I need coffee, I need coffee, okay. Um all right, so commission, what's your pleasure?
I make a motion to uh approve the zone change for the uh. We'll take we'll take them one at a time, I guess, uh uh approve the zone change request for the B two two thousand eight L L C.
Okay, we have the zone change, we have the motion by Mr. Zigma, do we have a second?
Second, Commissioner Wallman.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Um do we have further discussion on this or any comments from the commissions? All right, then um all those in favor, I.
Hi.
Hi.
Is there any commissioners opposed? Again, I think I said, do you want to roll?
I'm sorry, and I didn't I didn't push it last time because I lost my list. Um I'm sorry, um but this is the way we've been advised by counsel.
Okay.
So let me get back to the list of attendees. Um George Millard.
Hi.
Uh Timothy Zigma.
Hi.
Brian Rogan.
Hi.
Joan Beely.
Uh Steve Wallman.
Hi.
Uh I am seated on this one is Peter Zerabozza, I believe.
Yep.
Hi.
And Steve Biella Junior.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you on that one, then up next is the special permit for the mixed use development.
Make a motion to approve with the with the staff's comments. Timothy Zigma.
Okay, um motion.
Commissioner Wallman second.
Mr. Wallman's gonna take the second on that. All right, and then so further discussion, and I assume that your um. Uh your approval would cover that the signage or whatever coming in would be under staff um uh review?
Yes.
All right, and then also that we had um.
Uh also also the the ten acre thing has to be discussed. I make a motion that the the ten acre uh restrictions stay in place uh for the project for.
All right, so, yeah, because we have some parameters in there, so the ten acres um.
Can I make a comment, this is Commissioner Millard? Don't we don't we want it to be that the ten acres is is relative to the aggregation of of the of the individual parcels? So we don't really care if they, you know, have two threes and a four, as long as it makes up ten acres. Versus not ten acres per per. Phase, so to speak, otherwise they need all thirty acres to do what they want to do, that's not what we're really intending them to do.
I would agree with Commissioner Miller.
Two acre recommendation, isn't that what Dr. Poland said?
Yes.
So I I disagree with Tim, sorry, Tim, but I think we need to go with the two acre option, which will then take care of what our expert we hired suggested.
Why, aren't we saying that it's a two acre minimum, but in aggregate you have to have a ten acre parcel?
He he agreed with the that he he agreed with the the our expert agreed with the that this ten acres. That was to to make a combination of of lots in town Berlin to come up to ten acres for this type of development.
Right.
Uh the underlying zone.
Right, but that's not that's not what you said.
The underlying zone was two acres. The underlying zone was two acres. He but he said there was a conflict in the regulations between the tent and the underlying laying zone, which was two acres. And we would have to make a decision of which way we want to go. Uh.
Commissioner Rogan, uh.
Yes, go ahead, Steve.
Uh Roger, yes, I would uh I would agree with Commissioner Millard and uh Commissioner Wallman. Um I think that the idea is that why we had the ten acre overlay was to allow for a project to come together. I do think it would be beneficial that now that the project has been proposed and the zone change has gone through. I think it would be more beneficial to the town to do the two acres for numerous reasons. One being not only the open space that the town will get, which will give control to the town for uh for further. Parks or walking trails or whatever we'd like to do, considering connecting it to a uh a budding properties. Uh but I also think when considering. Just the scope of dealing with financing for the developer and everything like that, that uh it'd probably be easier to get. Um investors on board. And I think that would help improve the quality of the project, um which would be one of my concerns would be that. I do like uh a majority of the project, but I am a little uneasy. Normally, I feel like precedent has been when we deal with a project that's is this big, we know exactly what is going to happen. Um from start to finish for for the whole thing. And having that faith for kind of ambiguous, um I could see having the ten acre. Being a hindrance um to having a really nice project for commercial use in that first three hundred. Feet, I'm sorry, I'm a bit tired, so I know I'm mumbling a bit, but.
Yeah, and I think the other thing we have to take into consideration is the um the open space ownership as well. I mean, what will have what will that? What will happen there with the with the approval, is it dedicated to the town, is it offered to the land trust or?
Well, it was go under the under the ten acre parcel that goes to the con uh conservation area, which is not buildable.
Yeah, well, I just remember that when we were looking at that, the open space component, that there was a budding property that the town did own. That we could combine, which is why I would rather say, I know the town really isn't in the business right now of acquiring more land because of the upkeep cost and everything. But there could be a potential of a really nice park or something that could be worked into this.
You know, do you think it might be a valid idea if because of the lateness of this hour, we want to make sure, especially with this proposal, we'll get all the conditions down in the motion? Do you think that you would entertain as the commission the um letting this stay open? Or at least, well, I mean, I would like to take the time to get a really solid motion in play here with all the conditions listed. And I think if we can take those two weeks just to put the motion together, so we're clear on this and not kicking ourselves tomorrow morning when we forgot one thing or another.
Chairwoman Veely, I would agree, I would not mind taking this second part of uh. This application on with a clearing crisp mind rather than a tired one. Um it is a very complex thing and I do think we made some good, I think we made some good headway tonight closing the public hearing and getting the zone change approved.
And I think the developer knows that we know we're moving forward on this, we just want to get the verbiage right on this motion.
I don't see any reason that we'd have to.
And uh how about we had a first, we had a second out there, right? Yeah.
Uh I'm questioning one thing about that is is are we going to be taking more testimony because we're going to or staff. And the staff is staff and advisors, so staff will be uh they could basically writing up this motion?
I I think.
We gotta tell staff which way we want to go.
Yeah, well, the yeah, well, the I, yeah, the public hearing is closed, so I mean, the staff is is, I think we can direct the staff to make the motion. And I think that they they understand, I mean, going through the, I mean, I was taking nights notes tonight, I'm sitting here with Maureen. And I see her writing and scribbling and um, you know, I think um she's got everything covered. And of course, there's the tape as well.
Chairwoman Veely, might I make a suggestion?
Uh yes, and I'm speaking with?
With Commissioner Rogan.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Maybe we do a roll call and see who's in favor of the two acre or the ten acre so that Maureen can write up a proper motion.
Um, okay, all right, sure. So does that mean that you want to make a a motion uh?
Sure, I'll make a motion to have a roll call to see. Favor of what?
No, that's just a discussion.
Okay. All right.
It is just discussion, I'm just trying to get a feel of the commission to see.
All right.
There's motion on the table, so there's discussion on a motion.
Oh, pardon say again, Tim?
There's a motion on the table.
I rescind my motion.
So that's the discussion of the motion, you can uh uh go to the uh commissioners, ask their their opinion on the motion. And which way they want to go, and then the motion's got to be withdrawn or or whatever.
Okay, are you going to withdraw your motion at this point, Tim, or? Because you made the motion to approve.
I did make the motion approved, the only the only thing about the motion approved is if we're going with the ten acre thing. Or the underlying zone of of the two acre, so if you take your 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 uh straw vote of the commissioners now. Uh we'll know which way we're heading.
So can I can I read something? I I have I have Poland's comments, okay? And this was a comment he made in one of his reports to us. He says, my professional opinion is that the minimum lot size in the BT zone should be two acres. Since the BT is an overlay zone and the underlying BT one minimum lot size requirement is two acres. The eligibility requirement to establish a BT zone can remain ten acres.
Okay, okay.
That's what his professional opinion and recommendation was.
Then I'll make my motion.
And that's why we hired him, so let's go with what he thinks.
I'll make my motion, I'll I'll amend my motion to that point if that's what our professional said. Thank you, that's all, who second it?
The.
I did.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
And Maureen, that was that was on page seventeen of his February seventeenth report to us.
Thank you, oh, I thought I was muted, so I was waiting to talk as I unmuted, but I am unmuted. Um thank you for speci- specifying the page number because I don't actually have the report written um uh open on the table. And that will give us um a good reference in the discussion. So um can I? Can I, it was just a one line, can you repeat it one more time?
Okay, hold on.
Try and get the nuance because there was further discussion on that matter.
So this was the uh Dr. Poland's professional, my professional opinion is that the minimum lot size in the BT's B T D zone. Should be two acres since the BT is an overlay zone and the underlying BT one minimum lot size requirement is two acres. And he goes on to say the eligibility requirement to establish a BT zone can remain ten acres.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had that right because I have further notes from discussion, so thank you for that.
And then a future action is to go into that language and revise it period, but for this purpose, just to give them clarity on what they need to do.
And if I may, it was going to be my suggestion that the commission um decide whether they felt they could interpret that regulation as advised by Dr. Poland. Or um would want to see a text amendment. And not interpreted the way, so I appreciate that clarification.
Okay.
Do you want?
So the most the motion now stands uh that we approve uh with the the red the. Uh agreement of Dr. Poland's uh interpretation is just now read. Uh. And all staff comments.
Commissioner Rogan, I still don't see um. The necessity to get this approved tonight, I do think that we should take time with this motion, I'm not saying drag it out. But I'm just saying one more meeting to get something written down, get all the thoughts clear so that staff can go through it and may have all our comments. Proper.
So this is Commissioner Miller again, I I I agree with Brian, I mean, Maureen had said a bunch of stuff about them having their plans put all together and index or whatever. She had a bunch of good ideas, maybe if Maureen could, you know, pull together a list for our next meeting for as a starting point. And then we could see if we needed to add anything to it or not, it it would be a lot more succinct and clear to them on what what we're trying to get across to them.
Okay.
I guess what I'm saying is Commissioner Rogan, I'm just not comfortable voting on that motion tonight.
I agree with you.
Chairwoman, this is Adam, can I make a point of order real quick?
Who was that?
Adam.
It's Adam.
Okay, yes, please, I'm.
Uh now, uh just uh because there's an upcoming zoning board of appeals meeting with this item on the agenda with regard to motor vehicle location. Um does the commission have any uh comments, reservations, outstanding items with regard to the gas station? Um that would be germane to that motor vehicle location, or are the general focus of comments elsewhere?
I believe that most of our focus has been um as far as the residential, as far as the walking trails. Um and pertaining to that, we understood that there was a parcel that was going to be designated for um. The gas station or fueling stations. Um and our our interest with that was uh pedestrian traffic that might be crossing over and just the traffic flow itself. So that had a lot to do with it, I don't think we really, we did not get into the design or what this gas station or fueling station is all about. So um ours our focus was definitely the residential and the hotel, possible hotel.
That's fair enough. Yeah, that's fair enough, I, you know, the nitty gritty of site plan can happen through this commission answer permitting. Uh just want to ensure there wasn't anything that might get in the way of a Z B A potential approval if they should soon desire to do so.
Okay, all right, so.
Hey, Madam Chair, can I jump in for a second?
Yeah, go right ahead.
This is Commissioner Wallman, just so the applicant knows where we stand. So I I think we we all agree on the zone change, we all agree on the site plan uh application. And that we're looking at a gas station, a thirty-three hundred convenience store square footage, a thousand square foot drive-in, two hundred units with a hundred and sixty markets and forty affordable. That we're going to have a retail building in the area of forty-seven hundred square feet, a possible bank at twenty-five hundred square feet, a hundred plus hotel room. Should that change, he has to come before us to check to for an application again or a a special permit or approval. Um proposed uh walking trails of almost four acres. So in the body of it, we've kind of conceptually agreed that's what we're shooting for, we just want to nail down the specifics so the client knows we're moving forward. Would that be a careful summary for everyone?
I, Commissioner Rogan, I would say that's a fair statement.
That's a very, that's a very fair statement, we just want to get the language for the approval down.
Right, so that's so what I'm saying is, we all kind of agree on that's what's happening here, we just want to cross our T and dot our I. Right, so that's, so what I'm saying is, we all kind of agree on that's what's happening here, we just want to cross our T and dot our I, so we cover ourselves from a legal standpoint and make sure we get all the zoning, but that the applicant has a good feeling, at least when we sign off tonight, that we'll be able to wrap this up, but just be real nitpicky about nailing down all the verbiage for our next meeting.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll withdraw my motion if the second withdraws too.
Okay, and that would be you, Steve, Wallman?
Yeah, I, I'll withdraw so we can clean it up.
Okay, all right, so we're going to continue this, right? All right, so that's where we are, all right, that item will continue, so now we have the proposed, yes?
Commissioner, do we need a motion to continue?
This is Maureen speaking, no, that you don't need a motion to not vote on a decision.
Okay.
You have sixty-five days in order to make a decision after a public hearing closes.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Next is the proposed amendment to the Berlin zoning regulations for Timothy Sullivan, for the sections six G three, which is the gasoline filling station, I think we're going to be, I think that's continued, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, we continued that one, all right. Then we had the proposed amendment for the zoning regulations for the planned residential infill development, and I think that that is also that's continued as well. Okay, so we're getting out of the old business into the commission business. I, I don't think we're going to discuss the plan of conservation development for 2023, but Maureen has a finger up, she just wants to say something quick.
I just, real quick, you've got some stuff in your packet that relates to the plan of conservation and development. Staff would really appreciate if, given the guidance last month that you, that the committee is basically, for the P O C D will basically be this commission, that as we distribute things to you, you make a file, because we might be pulling out maps or something at any given time when we're discussing, when we have the P O C D on the agenda, or when we're have a meeting with regard to the P O C D, and that will help us not have to make multiple copies, we will also be gathering these things digitally, so they'll be available, so you might not necessarily have to cart around.
Okay.
A, a file cabinet. The rest of that is, think about meeting times and dates, I know it's really late, who wants to think about that right now, that was also in my cover memo, and just the things to think about. Today was the close date for the RFQ for a 2023 P O C D consultant and 2022 Affordable Housing Plan, it was a combined anticipation of combined proposals, that was at four PM, we received three proposals. We suggest that a selection committee be established with one or two commissioners and staff for a total of three or five reviewers. We don't think we have to narrow choices with only the three proposals, but we can then work to compile the, the review as a review team to then bring the proposals back to the commission, unless you direct us, otherwise the staff would like to work on on pulling that together.
Okay.
And then, the last item, I think that's the only thing with regard to the P O C D. I do have one other item of interest that was in your packet that I wanted to point out that Special Act 2020, twenty-one dash three, outdoor uses was distributed in your packet. It basically allows for the patios and sales to continue outdoors as the executive order allowed last year. This extends to March 2022. Summary, and this is, many of you may get questions with regard to this, then a new administrative application is not required for the same proposal or the, or the places of business that had these outdoor patios last year, but changes should come in for staff review, fire, martial health, we want to make sure everybody's health, safe. And new ones only need administrative review for the temporary nature till March of next year, permanent patios, of course, will go through the regular process like Sliders did. Okay, fine.
All right, that's great, so wrapping it up, so please, can I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, come on, guys.
Motion to adjourn.
Who had the motion, everyone chimed in?
I'll take that one.
You'll take that, that's Steve Bialla. All right, who has the second? Who has the second?
Can I take that too?
No.
I'll give you the second.
Come, buddy.
Further discussion, all those in favor, aye?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Bye, bye, guys.
Have a good night, everybody.